First Board Meeting of April 2022. We thank you for being here. We have a jam-packed agenda, so we cannot wait to get right to it. We have established a quorum, all present but one. We would love to have our criminal court clerk, Mr. Howard Gentry, if you wouldn't mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please come to the podium. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. -- Mr. Gentry and attendees. All right, I would like to receive a motion and approval to adopt this agenda. Sure, if we have any amendments for the agenda, please feel free to suggest that now. Sure.
Okay, I want to -- I'd like to pull A1E, which is Policy 5.117. Or I'll pull the whole -- pull 1E.
Pull the whole thing, and then when you make the motion, make it without that one.
Gotcha.
All right, so we are pulling 1E, Board Policies. Any other amendments? Yes?
Yes, I'd like to pull Item 1D13 and 1F.
Okay, that's 13, Panorama Education, and the last one.
Budget.
1F, gotcha, okay, approval of our budget. All right, so do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, removing 113 and E and F?
I make the motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, we have an amended agenda unanimously accepted. Dr. Battle, we'll kick it over to you for awards and recognitions.
All right, thank you Chair Buck. We have a lot of great news to share about our students and staff tonight, so I will go ahead and get started. We're going to start with our wrestlers who are here with us. I'm excited to spend a little time tonight on a sport that doesn't get a lot of attention, but should, and that's wrestling. The combination of strategy, skill, strength, agility, and endurance makes wrestling a truly amazing sport. This evening, we are proud to recognize and honor Metro Schools wrestlers and wrestling coaches. This year, 27 MMPS wrestlers qualified for the state championship tournament, and nine earned medals. So tonight, you'll meet the nine medalists, as we call them up by school. First, we have Kane Ridge High School, under the leadership of Coach Kincaid. Kane Ridge is their transitioning up. Kane Ridge's Janaya Clemmons, who is the 152-pound class, earned a sixth-place medal in her first year of wrestling. Well, check this out. Janaya pinned three of her opponents during the state championship tournament. Also from Kane Ridge is Bryce White, who finished in third place in the 145-pound class. Bryce is a three-time state medalist, an All-American, a member of the All-Miss State Team, and the Middle Tennessee Wrestling Coaches Association Girls' Dream Team, Female Wrestler of the Year. She finished the season 17-1, is one of the best wrestlers in the country. Congratulations Kane Ridge Wrestling Team. And thank you to Principal Sanchez and Coach Kincaid as well. Next, we have two wrestlers from East Nashville Magnet High School, led by Coach Bass. Jerry Campbell was the state runner-up in the 220-pound class. Jerry finished the season 29-3. Let's give it up for Jerry. And Kaymon Overton earned a third-place medal in the 285-pound class. Kayman was named to the Class A Wrestling Dream Team, was named All-Miss State by the Tennessean, and finished the season 29-2. Let's give it up for Kayman. And again, thank you to our coaches, principals. Thank you so much for being here and all your continued support. Next up is Hillwood High School and Coach Roberto Martinez, Maldonado Martinez. Let's give it up for Ethan Martin from Hillwood, who came in third place in the 113-pound class. Ethan finished the season 25-3. Congratulations to Ethan, coaches, and principal. All right, now we have two wrestlers from Martin Luther King Jr. Magnet High School, led by Coach Love. If you all can come on up to the front. All right, we're celebrating Gregory Gomez, who earned a fifth-place medal in the 126-pound class. Gregory won four matches in the state tournament, pinning one opponent and outscoring the other three 17-5. Gregory has earned multiple medals in his high school career. Let's give Gregory a round of applause. In addition to Gregory, we're celebrating MLK's Steve Ramos. He is the state runner-up in the 113-pound class. Steve pinned three of his four opponents in a dominating run to the state championship match. Let's give it up for Steve. Congratulations to you, your coach, and principal as well. Thank you so much for being here. Next up is McGavick High School and Coach Paul Douglas. Now, as they're coming up, let me tell you about McGavick's Valerie Smith, who is a legend in high school wrestling. Valerie earned the third-place medal in her class. She finished the season 11-1 and pinned three opponents in the state tournament in less than a minute, including one in an astounding 14 seconds. She was named to the All-Miss State Team by the Tennessean, as well as the district's dream team. Valerie was recently selected as Tennessee's winner nominee for the National Wrestling Hall of Fame's Tricia Saunders High School Excellence Award, which celebrates the nation's most outstanding high school senior female wrestlers for their excellence in wrestling, scholastic achievement, citizenship, and community service. Valerie is a four-time state medalist and two-time state champion. So girls wrestling became a T double S double A sanctioned sport in 2015. And with four medals and two state championships, Valerie is certainly one of the greatest wrestlers in the history of the sport in Tennessee. All right, and finally, let's talk about John Overton High School. So Overton, if you can come on up, which is led by Coach Hardy. At Overton, Vivian Mariscal is the state champion in the 100-pound class. Let's give it up for Vivian. Vivian finished the season undefeated, 20-0. She is a member of the Tennessean's All-Miss State Team and the Middle Tennessee Wrestling Coaches Association Dream Team. Vivian annihilated opponents in the state tournament with three pins leading to the championship match, including a semifinal match that lasted only 24 seconds. Her championship match was unforgettable. It was an unforgettable display of skill and strength, perseverance and grit, and she was crowned state champion. So ladies and gentlemen who are with us this evening, please join me in applauding the state champion in Vivian and all the other outstanding wrestlers that we've celebrated. If we could have all of our wrestlers who were just recognized, coaches, principals, to join us up front. We would love to get a picture for you before you head out. We know you've got a lot of work you're doing and studying and practicing, but we definitely wanted to recognize you this evening. So if you all can come and join us up front. And board members, if your schools are represented, please join us for a photo.
And you pull him out, Valerie, you want him. Put him out. Pull him out, girl. Make the swag. And give him to you, you want it.
Unbelievable.
In there, Chris, make sure you're in there now. Show. Look at that, MMPS excellence. Yes. Look at y'all, y'all look good. They make you look good, Cooper. All right. Someone talking about that's beautiful right there.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, we will continue on with our awards and recognitions. Next, we're going to honor a young man you've already seen here once this year, but I'm telling you, you better get used to seeing him and hearing his name. Brandon Miller is an elite basketball player who was previously recognized as a McDonald's All-American after an incredible career at Kane Ridge High School. But Brandon wasn't done. Since we last saw him here, he has been named the T double S double A Class 4A Mr. Basketball and the Tennessee Gatorade Player of the Year. And Brandon forced me to have to change my talking points today because just today, Brandon was named a Second Team Max Prep All-American. Brandon will be graduating soon from Kane Ridge and heading to the University of Alabama. Brandon, congratulations once again on all of your honors and awards. And thank you, thank you for representing Metro Nashville Public Schools with your talent and your constant drive to improve and succeed. Mom and Dad, thank you for your constant support. I know it's been a lot of traveling and recognitions, but we appreciate you all as well. I'd also like to give a thank you to his coach, wonderful coach, and principal for their continued support. I think this one should send us to our feet as we get ready for a photo. Let's stand up and give him a round of applause.
That's awesome trophy.
Christian, do you need your fan back?
See, I'm like hot and I'm cold, but you can keep it. You can keep it.
You just let me know if you need it.
I'm okay.
I'm enjoying it.
Isn't it super convenient?
It's so much better than papers.
Amazon, ladies, Amazon.
We're playing basketball.
That East kid though, yeah, I was a little intimidated.
John, how tall are you? You're gonna have to get some raw fruit and vegetables with you.
You're 6'4". So he's 6'7".
Yeah, there's a difference.
Wow.
No, no, and I can't even get down on the court like that again. I'd have seen him knock on some people.
Make your jaw feel sore.
I know.
I know how I feel next to John.
I know, right?
Look up at him, Dr. Battle, look up.
And she stood at the top of the shoulder.
All right, we will move on with our agenda today. I would like to invite Dr. Kevin Armstrong up to the podium, please. Thank you so much, Dr. Armstrong. For everyone who is listening in and watching tonight, Dr. Armstrong is a principal of Dupont Hadley Middle School. And he was recently elected Vice President of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, an organization for principals at all levels. Let's give him a round of applause. So if you didn't understand the magnitude, NAESP represents approximately 18,000 principals across the United States. And many of our own principals are members here at MMPS. Dr. Armstrong has been a leader within NAESP for years, and it's wonderful to see his talents recognized at the national level with this election while knowing he's also doing a great job for us right here in our district at Dupont Hadley. Again, congratulations, Dr. Armstrong. Thank you for representing us so well, and congratulations to you.
Congratulations, principal.
All right, we're coming around the corner. Last fall, Belmont University expanded the Bridges to Belmont program to create more full scholarships for more of our graduates from more of our high schools. And that scholarship is now known as the Bell Tower Scholarship. This is a program that makes everything Belmont has to offer accessible to MMPS students who might not have college access otherwise. It creates bridges not only to Belmont, but also to the world beyond. Bridges to Belmont was initially available to graduates of Maplewood, Pearl Cone, Stratford, and White Creek High Schools. In October, Belmont agreed to expand the program to graduates of Glencliff, Hillsborough, Hillwood, Hunter's Lane, John Overton, and McGavick. And that's not all. After bringing in 34 students each year, Belmont raised the bar for itself and committed to 50 Bell Tower scholarships per year for MMPS graduates. Now that's 50 full scholarships a year for MMPS graduates. It's an astonishing commitment that will help dozens of first-generation students from our schools in our city attend college at Belmont every year. And those students are doing very well in Belmont's classrooms. As of last fall, there were 123 Bridges to Belmont Scholars with an average GPA of 3.41. These students are seizing their opportunity. Tonight, we have many of the newest Bell Tower Scholars with us here along with their high school principals. You can see their names as they're scrolling on the screens above you. Remember, there's 50 now of these scholars. Students, we're so proud of you as you get ready to graduate in about six weeks, just hang on, almost there, and then head to Belmont University. You do us proud with your work ethic and your determination to succeed. And we are so grateful to Belmont President Dr. Gregory Jones and his administration for his commitment to our students. Dr. Jones would have loved to be here tonight, but he could not and should not -- he should not have resisted spending more time with his newly-born grandchild. So tonight, we do have with us Joyce Cersey, who is Belmont's Director of Community Relations, and Jason Rogers, Belmont's Vice President for Administration and University Council. We also have a very special guest who wants to congratulate our Bell Tower Scholars, and that is our mayor, Mayor John Cooper.
Thank you, Director and Chair and School Board Members. I mean, it's so much exciting things going on. I'm so grateful to be here to share with you and this incredible news about Belmont, 50 in one year. And today, you know, we broke ground for the new state-of-the-art elementary school in Goodlesville. And that's representing for, I'm glad Chris Henson is here to verify this, $422 million in capital spending for school projects since I've been in office in the last two and a half years. And you know what that represents? That is more than the la -- already more than the last three mayors combined. All right, so not only the best-paid teachers in the state of Tennessee, but on to other challenges with the budget ahead to make our school system the envy of the state and the South, and then of the country. But let's just congratulate these 50 students. And I want to thank Dr. Jones and everybody from Belmont. And a special thanks, and I know you've got a big agenda ahead, to former HCA CEO Milton Johnson and his wife Denise, who created the $10-million endowment to support Bridges to Belmont. He is a Glencliff graduate, and by golly, he is serving his city so well. But to our great scholars and to our great teachers, 50 in a year, that's incredible progress and just so exciting for MMPS and then to our great future ahead. Thank you all. Thank you, Doctor, for having me speak for a moment. And thank everybody, all the wrestlers in East. We was, I was here to have a little party for East High School in my office to celebrate their success too, because there's just so many exciting things going on in our school system. Thank you very much.
Now, Cooper, thank you so much for being with us tonight to celebrate this. And we want to first of all thank all of these students for applying to Belmont in the first place. Metro Schools staff who worked with us on the process to select these students. And we want to thank you, Metro Schools, for entrusting Belmont to help these students find their purpose and help them get equipped to make the world a better place. Thank you. This is Dr. Jason Rogers. Thank you all. And before you get too far, I would love to invite up all of our Bell Tower Scholars and leadership from Belmont to join us for a quick photo. So if you all can join us here at the front, we greatly appreciate it.
That's about says for everybody. We'll sit this one out.
I'll sit it out, because there's gonna be so many kids up here.
I want them to get their time. Congratulations.
Love this sweatshirt.
Principals, if you're here, we welcome you all to the stage as well. Take pictures with your scholars. Again, Lipscomb -- oh, goodness. Again, Belmont Admin. Belmont Admin and Principals, please join us at the step here.
Oh, good job, guys.
Congratulations, parents. Welcome back.
A lot of people representing.
Yes. It's a good -- I'm honoring. We need to do this on the, I guess it's good to have it this year at night because there's more people here, but man, it makes for a long night. I'll be watching y'all on the stream later from my house.
You don't do that. Rub it in.
Again, thank you too, and congratulations to our Bell Tower Scholars, to your teachers, principals, parents. Thank you all so much, Belmont University. We greatly appreciate you. All right, so finally, we'd like to honor the East Nashville Magnet High School Eagles, our state basketball champions. Let's give it up for them as they enter. All right, so the Eagles had an amazing season, and they capped it off by defeating Milan 72-55 in the Class 2A State Championship Game at the Murphy Center in Murfreesboro, March 19th. If you were not there, you missed it. In doing so, East became the second MMPS school to win a state boys' basketball championship in the last five years, following Maplewood's victory in 2017. They showed tremendous skill, determination, and teamwork to get the job done over the long haul of the season and when the pressure was really on at the tournament. So again, let's congratulate all the players from this terrific team, head coach Avery Patton, his assistant coaches Doris Patton and Sean Williams, and everyone else, including their parents, the East Nashville community, MMPS community, everyone who played a part in their success. a part in their success. Again, this is our East Nashville Magnet High School Eagles, our state basketball champions. Team, coaches, if you all can join us up here, Principal Jenkins, everyone, board member, we'd like to get another photo with you.
That's pretty.
I want one. You want one?
I want one.
Good job.
Can I sing my song again? They're playing basketball. They're playing basketball.
All right. Thank you again, Dr. Battle, MMPS students, and all the staff and families that have supported them. This is just really exciting for them. We will now move on to Director's Report. We'll be talking about Core Tenet III: Creating and Supporting Engaging Rigorous and Personalized Learning Experiences for All Students. Dr. Battle? Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I do have a brief Director's Report for you this evening. Again, thank you, Chair Bugs and Board Members. Today, we got to break around on the new Goodlessville Elementary School, which you heard about earlier, which is going to be a beautiful, extremely functional facility that will allow us to serve the students and families of Goodlessville with even more impact and success. I'm very excited about the plans there, and we had a great crowd despite the challenging weather this morning and a Plan B. There's clearly a lot of pent-up demand in that community for a new school, so really excited about that. And then also, last night, I enjoyed seeing many of you at the Teacher of the Year Dinner at Music City Center, where we honored the Teacher of the Year from each of our 32 schools, as well as district-wide finalists and winners from each tier, and the top support employees and principals from the district as well. It was a joyful celebration for what we do and of some of people who do it with such passion and commitment to serving our students and ensuring that every MMPS student is known. Now for our COVID-19 updates, just update from over the past week. We had 41 student cases the week of April 4th and nine staff cases. Yesterday as well, several of us were able to visit the Support Hub, and the board had the privilege of visiting the Advocacy Center at Goodlessville Elementary School, which is temporarily housed at the Old Graymar Middle School site until the new school is ready in 2324. Advocacy centers are in every elementary school. There are places where students who are struggling with their emotions can cool off, deal with anxiety and stress, and get back to a place where they can be ready to learn. Several students told us how helpful the advocacy center is to them, and a teacher said it had been the missing piece of the puzzle for them at Goodlessville Elementary School. One young man told us it was helping him with being a leader at Goodlessville Elementary School, and it helps him with his attitude, with his anger, and with knowing how to calm down. Hearing all of this made me feel even better than I already did about the investment that the board, the mayor, and the council made in putting advocacy centers in all of our elementary schools. We're not just investing in a program, we're investing in a transformative way of teaching students how to know themselves so that we can ensure that every student is known. And I would like to also give a huge thank you and shout out to the school team and principal there, who's just leading such transformative work. Now I'd like to turn our college and career, turn to our college and career readiness vision. We are working hard to provide comprehensive supports for post-secondary access and success to our students. This includes transitions, focused outcomes, and a post-secondary transition plan for every MMPS student. Creation of a college and career readiness department, Better Together with Nashville State Community College and other initiative aligned to post-secondary partnerships, New Skills Ready and growing pathways to thriving wage careers, and expanding avid to all of our middle schools. On this slide, you can see what we're ultimately driving at. What we do in our schools and classrooms can have a huge impact on what our students do in college and university classrooms to prepare themselves for the world beyond post-secondary We've been monitoring the impact of COVID-19 on our graduates. We did see a decrease in college going for the class of 2020, and we saw an even bigger decrease for the class of 2021, mimicking the data from our peer districts across the country. Though college-going decreased, the melt rate also decreased, which is a, which is better news, because that means more students who began the college-going process completed it than back in 2020. For our students who get to college, persistence, those returning for the second year, and completion, graduating within six years, remain steady across this dataset. This is not an MMPS challenge. Assuring that our students matriculate to and through post-secondary education is a challenge we must tackle together as a community. Preliminary data from Tennessee Promise shows that our hard work is paying off. We met or exceed, we meet or exceed state averages across all Tennessee Promise indicators. Nearly 84% of eligible Tennessee Promise students have completed their FAFSA. 42% of students who have completed Tennessee Promise steps self-identify as first-generation college students. And that's not including a large number who didn't answer that specific question. Please note that many of our students are not eligible for Tennessee Promise, including our undocumented students. In addition, economically disadvantaged students are pale-eligible and are more likely to access these dollars versus a last-dollar scholarship of Tennessee Promise, which supports middle and higher-income students because of the way it is structured. The final deadline for FAFSA is June 30, and we are working hard to make sure that all our seniors complete this important milestone. We work hard every day to set our students on a path of success. The metrics we, by which we measure our success, test scores, graduation rates, et cetera, are proxies for the measure that really matters to our students and families. Are they inspired and able to pursue a post-secondary pathway that allows them to live the way that they want? This is the true measure of our success, and this is the way I want the community to measure us. We have launched University of MMPS to remind and reorient us all to the purpose and intent of our work for students. This is about changing culture, mindset, and expectations we have for our students. Through the University of MMPS, we will build and grow meaningful, measurable partnerships with post-secondary partners and others that formalize our commitment to our students. We must embrace this challenge. The University of MMPS is part of my leadership vision and the priorities I've set forth, as well as a call to the community and to our partners. We will build a collaboration of excellence. We are launching the University of MMPS to deliver on our commitment to every student on a path to post-secondary success and reorient to the purpose and the intent of our work. If we change the culture, mindset, and expectations of the community and build meaningful, measurable partnerships with post-secondary partners, our students will have the opportunity for post-secondary success while they are with us and when they leave us, as is evident by our Bell Tower Scholars today. Here are just a few examples of the partnerships we have created or expanded as a part of the University of MMPS. We have our Better Together partnership with Nashville State Community College that has resulted in dual enrollment early college opportunities, as well as data sharing to support students during and after their careers at Nashville State. Just going to take us back to our Bridges to Belmont program, which has resulted in the Bell Tower scholarships we just announced for 50 students throughout the district, as well as our University U collaboration that provides a unique and impactful college experience for a select cohort of MMPS students. That was launched just last summer, summer of 2021. We've had some very in-depth conversations with the new Chancellor of Lipscomb University, Dr. Candace McQueen, on how we can strengthen our partnership to support new and current teachers and leaders, as well as our students. And we look forward to having an announcement very soon on that work, so stay tuned. We have also partnered with our state colleges and universities on several programs, including the UTK flagship, a Create and Code program with MTSU, and the New Skills Ready work with MTSU and Nashville State. There are just a few, these are just a few of many partnerships we hope to build upon and strengthen in the coming months and years, so that all of our students have strong pathways to success after MMPS. And our teachers and staff have access to world-class expertise and resources of these great institutions. So with that, Madam Chair, I will conclude my Director's Report, and I will turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Do we have any questions before we move into public participation? Go ahead, Mr. Little.
Just on the back, as we think about University of MMPS, and this sounds amazing. It talks about data-driven decisions, highest levers of impact. What is the data-driven decision? What does that look like? Like, as I try to envision the process?
Yes, absolutely. So we really started this work early on with Nashville State in our data sharing agreements. It gives us an opportunity to look at the critical data points to help advise the supports that are needed for students, those critical milestones to make sure we're keeping up with where students are and what additional layers of support are needed. We're also looking at the persistence to and through their college and university experiences. So we're working right now on what we are calling our momentum metrics, those leading and lagging indicators that help us really inform our work under University of MMPS.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Elrod and then Mrs. Cooper Walker.
Thank you. I am very excited about us having so many partnerships, and they are exceptionally valuable. We have so many of them, which is a nice blessing to have. Is there a way that we can get a list of some kind of what these partnerships are, ideally for each individual school, so we understand who we're speaking to, what's available in different schools, so we can best assess those things and have, frankly, informed conversations with the public?
Absolutely. We will compile all that information to provide to the board. We have, we're in a very fortunate space that our universities and colleges are stepping up and responding to the call, and so we've been hard at work just trying to make sure that we have aligned programs and scholarship opportunities for our students, but we can definitely get the board a list of all of those connected to the specific university, what it provides for our students, and other advocacy points as we move forward.
And then who manages those relationships? Is that somebody internal, or is that through another partnership that we have?
It varies. It depends on the specific partnership. As I mentioned, we're in conversations with Lipscomb about specifically the teaching profession, so that will, that will be different administrative team members. But the umbrella of University of MMPS falls directly under our Chief of Strategy, Dr. Kerry Redoff.
All right, Mrs. Cooper Walker.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. One is, I'm curious how we are leveraging ESTR dollars and specifically for college access and readiness, and also thinking about our college advising. And, you know, there was a time when we had senior college counselors in every high school. We moved to the academy model, as you know, Dr. Battle, and that position sometimes went away, often went away. Some schools have brought them back. I'm curious where we are on a dedicated college counselor in each high school.
Yes, thank you for that question. So two specific examples of how we're leveraging ESTR dollars. One is the program I mentioned, University U. We have a great partner in Belmont University, so they've also put some, some investment into the program itself, but we're looking to expand that program this summer. That's one example. Another one is, as you've mentioned, college advising. So we do have a few more college advisors out in some of our New Skills Ready schools that are piloting. We're working on the job responsibilities and expectations around that, making sure we have that really strong as we look to expand. And you might recall in the aspirational budget, we do have a budget item specific to college advisors as well. So we're looking to scale up based upon the successes of those college advisors that are currently in four, four or five of our schools right now.
This is not to you, Dr. Battle, but I hope my alma mater, Fisk University, steps up to the plate, because I see their name missing here as one of the oldest colleges. So I hope that, and hope also in the future, as we look long-terming, that we also look at majority Hispanic-serving colleges too, as also creating a partnership, as it's a long-term aspirational goal, given the makeup of our students, the diversity, that when we start expanding the University of MMPS, we also think about the other types of colleges and universities that are out there. But, great job.
Yes, thank you for that. And if you don't mind me just responding, we, just about all of our local colleges and universities, we have some level of partnership with them. What we're working towards now is bringing them under the University of MMPS and various specific student experiences and opportunities to build their confidence, the early post-secondary opportunities, so on and so forth. So I look forward to continuing to work with Fisk and other local colleges and universities as a part of this particular initiative.
Mrs. Tyler.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak real quick to your dual enrollment, because I got the chance to spend a little bit of time at early college, high school. And it is, for those who don't know, it is an MMPS-based high school where you do ninth and 10th grade as an MMPS student, but then you transition to do your junior and senior year on Nashville State Community, on their campus, and you take college courses, and these students end up with both a high school degree and an associate degree. And I was just really impressed to see the dedication of the students. When I was looking in, they were all engaged, they were excited about the work that they were doing, and to hear that of their, their new program, so they're graduating 46 students this year, and over two-thirds of them will have both the high school diploma and an associate degree. And the ones who have not gotten the associate degree are just lacking one or two credits. And so it just really shows the success of the program itself to set these kids up to be successful stepping off campus at 18 years old. I'm just really excited about it.
And thank you for your excitement around the early college at Nashville State. This year, we also expanded the early college model to White Creek High School. And so the, the current ninth-grade cohort at White Creek High School also has, are preparing to enter that dual enrollment space and graduate with their high school diploma and associate degree as well. So exciting opportunities and pathways, and we're constantly kind of assessing to see where the next expansion opportunity or other advanced academic opportunities can exist.
Definitely. And I also just want to take a minute to thank you for including me on your Advocacy Center showcase when you guys went to Goodlessville Middle at Graymar. It was such an exciting time to see the idea of how do we do restorative justice in a way that meets these kids at their needs and hears them and figures out a way to help them learn how to control themselves so they can be their best self. And what struck me was the way that it becomes a culture for the whole school is what makes it successful. And so you have to have that buy-in from all the teachers and the administration to make it work successfully, and this school is a really good example of that. And as I just remember looking back now, from when I was a teacher, there are so many things I would have done differently as my first year, it's just inevitable. But if there was a program like this that not only helped guide the students, but taught the teachers language to use and approaches to use and ways to get things to the students so that they know you care about them and they're willing to listen to you, and then you both can work together instead of feeling like there's any sort of block or punitive measures. So I just really love to see this, because it's going to benefit our students so much, but it's really also going to benefit our teachers. And I love that it's a program that can be helpful for both. And again, I just want to stress, it's got to have that, that whole school buy-in, because it really is a culture of the school. And I want to encourage our schools, all of our elementary schools, who now all have an advocacy center, to kind of work together to create that culture, so that everybody is on the same page and working together to meet all of them. is on the same page and working together to meet all of the needs of their students.
Thank you.
Mrs. Masters.
Yeah, I was just wondering, so I'm going to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony on April 19th at 9:00 a.m. of the new Davidson campus for Nashville State Community College in Madison, which is in my backyard. And so, I'm wondering what our plans are, if any, to expand and to have an availability on that campus for, like, the early college programs.
Yeah, early discussions around what that looks like. What, what is currently in the works is several of the Nashville State courses, classes have been held at the Hunter's Lane Campus as well. And so, we've already been partnering in that space, and now those courses and classes will be transitioning to the new campus where the ribbon-cutting will be held. And so, after we finish that completion, then we'll continue to have conversation around what's next and how we can build additional access on that part of town.
All right, it doesn't look like there are any other questions. The last thing that I will say is I heard about this advocacy center tour, and Dr. Battle, I'm sorry, I have to say, I heard that there was a young, an elementary student who saw you, asked you who you are. When you told her, she was, she was just struck and in awe and called you "Pretty Boss." As cute as that is, that really does speak to what representation means to disenfranchise people, especially the little girls, to see "Big Boss," it's "Pretty Boss." So, just thank you for what you do, what your team has done. We appreciate you. But with that, we move to an exciting portion of our, our meeting agenda, where we will hear from those persons who have requested to appear at this board meeting. In the interest of time, speakers are requested to limit remarks to three minutes or less. Once you reach the three-minute mark, you will hear this sound. And we ask that, there we go, you'll hear that sound. And we ask that you finish your last sentence. Any additional comments may be sent via email to individual board members. So, with that, we begin public, oh, my apologies. Before we begin public participation, we have an MNPS student, Andrew Allen of Overton High School, who's here to speak with us regarding work-based learning. Please welcome Mr. Allen to the podium.
Thank you. I'm a senior at John Overton High School in the IT Academy, more specifically the programming pathway, and I'm currently employed by Accenture, they're a global consulting firm. And the opportunity to work there as a high school student doesn't match to anything that I've accomplished in my high school career. You know, that foot in the door, that, you know, opportunity, that someone, you know, wants you to work at their company and will let you as, you know, 16, 17-year-old is just great to me. I mean, having that experience is something I wouldn't have had until, you know, later on in college, when I maybe got an internship, maybe not. Having that in high school and being able to put that on my college applications and, you know, anything else is, it's beyond me, it's a blessing. So, you know, work-based learning isn't just an internship to me, or just, you know, another job or anything like that. It's, it's that foot in the door. It's, you know, letting me be in my career before I'm even, you know, qualified. You know, I'm, I'm sitting here getting trained by supervisors and higher-ups at Accenture, and I can talk to anybody within Accenture that I need to talk to. You know, I'm connected to the whole network. And that, to me, is just, is priceless. I actually had the opportunity to go to Rutherford County School last year, and I chose to stay at John Overton High School when work-based learning was just, you know, a talk, a whisper. You know, I was like, if I could get into that, that would make this all worth it. And I'm so glad that I did. You know, this experience has been, I'll say it again, a blessing. So, for me, going on to college and all that, it's more than prepared. So, my plan is to go to Nashville State for my first year for the Prima Scholarship. And I've also got a transfer pathway into Georgia Tech. So, they've, yeah, they've said they'll accept me for fall of 2023, so first year is a... Thank you. That's the work-based learning experience.
Congratulations, Allen.
Burying the lead.
That is what we mean by college and career readiness. So, thank you, Allen, and congratulations. Vanderbilt would still love to have you, though, son, but that's neither here nor there. Now, we will begin with public participation with three minutes for each speaker. And first, we have Council Lady Emily Benedict.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Chair Bugs, and thank you to our board members for your service to the city. As we all know, these jobs are thankless, and I hope that you understand how much you are appreciated, both by our council as well as by the citizens of Nashville. I'm speaking today in, at the next meeting, you, Board Member Masters is going to, Member Masters is going to bring forward a resolution or something, that we're going to be honoring Lonnie Sadler, who is a famous Madisonian. Madison has five district council members that, that touched that area. And although Stratton Elementary and Madison Middle School are in District Eight, Council Member Van Rees's district, she was unable, she's out of town today, and so she's submitting a letter that you'll receive. And as Madison, as another Madison representative, I wanted to show our support as a community, as the council members for this. And I want to just, I don't want to read the letter, but I do want to call out just a couple of points from it, because Council Member Van Rees said it really well. So, first of all, Lonnie Sadler graduated from Madison High School, which is now where Madison Middle is, in 1972. He was a leader on the football team. He rushed for over 3,000 yards, and he, at Vanderbilt, and, and in his senior year, graduated in 1975, he was selected as captain by his teammates. He also was the, and at that time, he was the first African-American player to serve as a team captain for the Commodores Football Team. So, he, and he went on to be a head coach for the Madison Little Rams, the Graymar Pirates, and the Inglewood Raiders. And one of the young men that he coached went on to play in the NFL for the Buffalo Bills, and that's Marcus Bugs. So, he's also a successful restaurant owner here in Nashville. So, I strongly support this. This is going to be the road that connects Stratton Elementary to Madison Middle School, so it's going to be a great way for people, when they're on Old Hickory Boulevard, tons of traffic, are going to see him, and it's really going to be a great honor for him. So, I ask for your support for that, when it comes in front of you in a couple of weeks, and just want you to know that the community of, of council members in the area are supportive of this as well. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you, Council Lady Benedict. Cindy Goddard. Carolyn Lutz. Wayman Bugs. Kelly Peterson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Battle. Tonight, I've come to address not this board, but the parents who should have been sitting behind me but aren't here tonight for some reason. I'm frustrated with apathetic parents who have suddenly taken such a great interest in education. Where have they been? Where are they tonight? Seriously, when our schools' PTO, PTA, or any booster club has asked for them to serve, where are they? From where I sit, it's next to impossible to get parents to serve in these vital organizations that give us a voice in our schools. Many of them only seem capable of directing their anger at you guys. Over two subjects, masks and books they don't like, both are important conversations to be had. We need to listen to one another instead of screaming at the top of our lungs. The other side is wrong. Yet, these two items are such a small part of what shaping education policy is about. Are they aware that right now, the state is rushing a vote on a funding formula that will raise our property taxes sky-high? That so-called TISA bill is full of funding holes, and the only place the state is going to come looking for it is in our pocketbooks. There's another bill in the state to, poised to take the ability for us to elect our leaders to those chairs right there. If they think they aren't being heard now, just wait till there's nothing we can do about those people who sit up there. Guess they think the legislature won't really do that, but guess again, because there are so many people and groups fighting to do very, that very thing. All these things are going to come to fruition, they'll be sitting back scratching their heads, wondering what could have been done to prevent this. All they have to do is look in the mirror and realize they were so worried over two small parts of public education, they failed to see the bigger picture. Education has been drowning for years due to a lack of advocacy in state legislative bills directed at Nashville. Where are they? Not here. MNPS staff in this room, please raise your hands. I want to know where they were last month, as many of those raising their hands stood here and spoke with deep emotions about the crises they are facing daily. Yet, this room was vacant, and is vacant now, because they left after saying the exact same things they have said for months. I hope they take a hard, long look at those faces, because soon, there's going to come a day when, one by one, their positions, they will leave them, and no one will be left to educate, transport, or support our children. Every single day, these individuals go out of their way to do what is required for our kids, and above and beyond, even due to ridiculous state standards, required training, and one-size-fits-all scripted curriculum, to name a few. They've stood up here month after month, satisfied with the status quo before, and now they're trying to blame someone because they just suddenly woke up and didn't like what they had to see. They've always had the power, and they just chose not to use it. And I apologize, I got a little lengthy, I had to pivot since nobody showed up tonight, but thank you.
Thank you. Yes, here.
I'm Joseph Beckley. This is my classmate, Jamarien Jackson. First of all, we would like to thank the board for allowing us to speak on what we consider to be a very important issue. We respectfully ask that our individual, that our individual three minutes be combined into, into a joint six minutes of speaking time.
I see Jamarien Jackson. Go right ahead.
We are eighth-grade students from the East Nashville International Baccalaureate School, and this speech to you is the fulfillment of, and, and this, my bad, I'm sorry.
It's okay, you're doing fine.
And this speech to you is the fulfillment of part of our IB community project. In MNPS, there are far fewer paraprofessionals in schools than, than needed. This is extremely problematic. We are here tonight to ask the, the board to work to fulfill the MNPS mission statement of, and I quote, "Delivering a great public education to every student every day," end quote. The fulfillment of this mission is impossible when, when every student's needs is not being fulfilled due to a lack of support staff. Concerning equity, MNPS states that it, and I quote, "Believes in equitable access and opportunities for all students from early childhood through graduation," end quote. Access to individual need is a crook of what it means for, for something to be equitable. So, it is literally impossible for equitable access and opportunities for all students to exist when so many of our peers with, with individual or exceptional needs are left to fend for themselves. What so many of our peers need is a paraprofessional to aid them in their daily, in their daily school life, without meeting this basic need. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And equitable education is impossible for our most vulnerable peers.
At the time of this writing, MNPS has shortened nearly 400 certified teachers and 82 paraprofessionals. District-wide, we believe a fundamental reason for the shortage of paraprofessionals in MNPS is lack of adequate pay. We commend the board for its recent stated commitment to, to raising wages for paraprofessionals and support staff. This is a much-needed step to acquire and talent paraprof, sorry, paraprofessionals to aid our peers. But this is also a necessary step for MNPS to live up to its stated belief in supporting, developing, compensating, and retaining our teachers, leaders, and staff. The compensation, the compensation MNPS provides to all employees is much more than a salary, is an investment and a commitment to the future of the city's children. Our exceptional peers deserve equitable education opportunities. In order for these opportunities to be realized, we need fully-staffed paraprofessionals. These paraprofessionals must be paid a competitive and livable wage. Currently, paraprofessionals in MNPS are, are paid $14 an hour. This is roughly $29, this is roughly $29,000 a year. A recent study by MIT shows that to live comfortably in Davidson County, a single individual with no children must at least earn $17, $17 an hour, or $34,000 a year. With, with one child, this salary requirement shoots up to $59,000 a year, or $29, $29 an hour. Anyone working in a, in a school should be paid enough to live in a city in which they serve, without having to, without having to work in another job, or, or with struggle to, to get food and have shelter and security. Please invest in MNPS paraprofessionals. Please invest in, in the children of the city's future.
We thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joseph and Jamarien. Abe Kelleher. Dave Ro, sorry, Council Member Dave Rosenberg.
Thanks, good evening. Thank you all for continuing to serve. Before I get to what I'm here to talk about, I just want to implore you, as you head into budget season, to be cognizant of arts programming being eliminated from our middle schools. It's so impactful, and $81,000 to pay for that kind of program is something that, hopefully, between ESAR and operating budget and other opportunities, we can find. Now, it's clear that a request that teachers have the opportunity to voice their concerns about a school without feeling that their jobs are on the line is too much to ask. I'm here to raise those voices tonight. Please remember, as I read these, that these are the teachers who support our kids every day, and they're just asking for a little bit of support in return. So, these are just some direct quotes from here on out. Everything I've got left is a direct quote from teachers who are currently or previously at the school. It's bad that you can't say any of our names because of the blank, that would happen, and I'm telling you, the blank would happen. Teachers have gone to him with teachers, issues dealing with behaviors, and he doesn't feel like it's important. He pretends they don't happen, tells them not to enter them into the system, and blames the teacher for behavioral problems. He was only for the parents, who were "yes, sir, yes, sir." When we got back from winter break, we had to go through a reset, and we still don't have rules for the entire school. Eighth grade's still running all over school cursing at everyone, and we don't have anything to base classroom and grade-level rules on. We have a student who's been threatening staff and students almost every day, and he told the staff, he told staff the student, quote, "Doesn't have the capacity to do anything, so we're not going to do anything about it." In the last two weeks, one teacher has gone to him and told him that she's having some issues with a student, and he told her, "Well, you just have to make it till May." This week, another teacher told him about a discipline problem, and he told her she should just take comp classes. This teacher, who's been put in a leadership position by him, asked, "Why do you allow these young black children to hug you?" And he hasn't removed her from that position. He puts yes people in leadership positions. You got all these people telling him, "Whatever you say is fine," without questioning anything, and that's why we have a lot of problems, one of the reasons, anyway. Anyone who verbalized dislike of IB was put on another list. If it isn't about IB, he doesn't give a blank. As long as you're a yes sir, you got the world, but if you point out things he's doing is inappropriate or not correct, you're done. I honestly don't want to go back, and if I found another job, I wouldn't be going back. In 40 years of teaching, last year was one of the absolute worst years, toxic situation. He says a lot of things to people above him, like Craig Hammond, and then says and does something else with us. It's an extremely hostile, hostile environment. All of the previous, for all of the previous principals deficits, they're nothing like he's got. He wasn't mean, he wasn't vindictive, he didn't go after children on purpose. His nickname is Trump. Every week on Sundays, I get sick, and people in that building just won't stand up and say it, because if he doesn't like you, he goes after you, and he doesn't let it go. Lots of teachers are leaving, but don't want to be, I can keep going for a little while, including the one who's got something in her bag for her kid to read if she gets killed, but, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rosenberg. Connie Lewis. Gloria Hauser.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Tara Coogan. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Glengarry Elementary, and I'm also an EL fellow with the Office of English Learners. I currently work in a school with a high population of English learners, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my students. English learners spend approximately seven hours a day in school. That adds up to about six hours after you consider lunch, recess, and transition time that is spent learning. In a perfect school... In a perfect school, students who score below a 3.5 on any portion of the WEEDAS screener or access test will receive at most two hours of instruction, directly or indirectly, from an English second language certified teacher. That leaves four or more hours, or about two-thirds of a student's day, where they are growing and learning under the facilitation of a general education teacher or a related arts teacher, who may not have any knowledge of an EL student's learning and cultural needs. I am asking that MNPS take a more strategic approach to our professional development structure. I'm asking for schools that have at least 50% population of English learners to have all of their school-based professional development, especially related to curriculum, to be co-presented with an EL teacher or an EL lead at the school. Professional development is a teacher's key to understanding a new topic, curriculum, or a school-wide initiative. Too often, in the professional developments that I attend, myself or other teachers are asking multiple questions about how this is going to serve our students at our school. We are often left with no answers. By providing an EL lens directly into professional development, it creates understanding of EL differentiation and saves a lot of wasted time. It also strengthens MNPS's mission of collaboration and equity. There are going to be 51 hours of embedded professional development next year. MNPS can accomplish this goal for free by asking EL lead teachers or just EL teachers to use one day of the already allotted summer planning days to preview and work on their school's August-based PDs, or asking them to join the leadership team. It's MNPS's mission to make every student known, and this needs to include our EL students. Simply put, this is a best practice for high-quality professional development that MNPS should be implementing, especially before the new math curriculum starts in the elementary level next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Catherine Barick.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Addison Barick, and I teach fifth through eighth grade students with interrupted formal education at Margaret Allen Middle School. This means that my students have all arrived in the U.S. in the past year and are learning to read and write for the very first time, as they were denied access to education in their home countries. This year, I've gotten the opportunity through Teacherpreneur, a cohort of teachers with Nashville Public Education Foundation, and the EL Fellowship, to investigate the experiences of unaccompanied minors in our district. I'd like to introduce you to one of my students, let's call him Mario. Mario is 15 years old and one of six children. He loves soccer, he's determined to learn, and believes education is very important for his future. Mario may sound similar to many hard-working teens that you know, but there are some key differences. He was unable to attend school in his home country due to gang violence, so he is learning to read and write for the first time, as he simultaneously learns English and the content of all of his classes. He bravely traveled to Nashville from Honduras on his own, and now lives with a friend of a friend he met on his journey. Mario is only one of the over 4,000 unaccompanied minors released to Davidson County, according to the Office of Refugee Resettlement. To put this in perspective, the Migration Policy Institute lists Davidson County as home to the 15th-largest population of unaccompanied minors in the country. And this population is expected to grow by 100%, following policies that only allowed minors across the border during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. Mario's status as an unaccompanied minor means that he is living without a parent in the U.S., and he works a job that allows him to pay rent here in Nashville and send money back home to his family in Honduras. The shift to virtual learning during the pandemic afforded Mario a unique opportunity. He was able to contribute to his family income while going to school. But because these students are new to the country, they rarely meet the GPA or MAP score requirements to participate in virtual school. Now Mario faces an impossible choice: go to school or help his family. To meet the needs of MNPS students, we need a range of options for working high schoolers that include flexible school hours and an accelerated graduation path. While there are many possible solutions, I would like to advocate for funding and awareness around programming called Flex Academy. Flex Academy is designed to increase the attendance and graduation rates of working students by offering hybrid courses with tutoring sessions in the evening. This programming could support students like Mario by providing a teacher who would check in and hold the student responsible for their work obligations, which aligns with MNPS's recent focus on work-based learning. Our district school is for every student to be known, and knowledge is a call to action. Now that you know about the plight of unaccompanied minors in our city, I'm asking you to create and allot funding for flexible school offerings that would benefit Mario and other students in need of flexible school hours. Mario is willing and able to work hard to make a life for himself here in Nashville. Are we willing to help mold the system to enable him to achieve his goals? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cannon Hagewood. Courtney Dial.
Good afternoon. My name is Courtney Dial, and I'm an English learner teacher in Metro at Yuna Elementary and an EL fellow in MNPS. Did you know that in 2021, in Tennessee, about 64% of third graders were not reading at or above grade level? Some things that are being implemented to combat this are summer school and tutoring, which are great, especially to those that had interrupted schooling due to COVID. The Tennessee Learning Loss and Student Acceleration Act was passed to combat this learning loss, which will fully be implemented this next school year. One issue with this act is that third graders that score below grade level on reading on T and Ready will either need to retake the test and score on level, attend summer school and tutoring with a 90% attendance rate, or they will be held back. This means that many students are at high risk of retention, approximately 80% of the English learner population in Tennessee. Let's put this into perspective. I have a student that is reading below grade level that lives with extended family here in America, while the rest of his family lives abroad. The only time that they could go back to visit their immediate family would be in the summer. Therefore, expecting that 90% attendance rate for English learners during summer school to not be retained, many of my students would have to choose between seeing their families or moving on to the next grade level. My goals are for Tennessee to educate the community about this act, since many, especially teachers and parents, are unaware especially of the retention portion, as well as to advocate for English learners to be waived against retention based on this act alone, not just those with less than two years of English Language Arts. Many of our students had interrupted schooling attendance due to COVID, so they did not receive two uninterrupted years of ELA. If students with documented disabilities are protected against retention, all English learners should be protected from retention as well, to be in compliance with individual learning plans and the law. Holding back a student should be based on recommendations of the parents, teachers, and other stakeholders, based on the maturity of the students, if they had interrupted schooling, and what is the best interest of the student, not just based on one piece of data. Parents and teachers should be the ones deciding if the kid should be retained, not just the state. I would love to talk more about this law and what the impact of this law has on our students. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Audrey Sika-MvBudula-Feruzi.
Greetings, Board of Education. I am an English as a Second Language teacher at Henry Maxwell Elementary School, and I am also an ESL fellow. I used to be an English learner in this district. After a year of being in the English learner program, I was able to exit and eventually went on to college and became the person that I am today. In my most recent teaching years, I remember observing an English learner in my class who had just arrived to this country from Egypt. That student wanted to exit out of the program to graduate on time, so I witnessed her study her academic content in and out of the classroom and also on the bus. She, along with other students, needed more support outside of the classroom, and that was not provided to them. So this situation prompted me to start a virtual after-school program that empowers long-term and newcomer English learners become leaders in their school community, to exit out of the English program and to graduate on time. I have been able to share with them what it takes to be successful, and we have been studying a book called The Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens, which changed my life. I grew Dreams After School Program because there are a few programs in metro Nashville public schools that specialize in creating leaders in English learners. I ask that you continue to support programs such as Dreams, because the future of many long-term English learners depend on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ifet Wilson.
Masaal khir, ana ismi Ifet Wilson. Ana mutharjimtul lago ala arabia min idartit tegliim al xas. Wa agadwa fi pranamej agad al qada l'laam edrasi sanad wa 11 wa 22. I believe now you understand the situation of our students and their family who has non-English language background, so allow me to start over. Good evening, Board members. My name is Ifet Wilson. I am the Arabic interpreter for the Special Education Department, and also I am the fellow forums English learners for this year. According to Title VI of the Civil Rights Acts for the year 1964, all the parents have the right to understand the information that's related to their children's education in a language they understand. And also, according to the data warehouse from our metro Nashville public schools, we have around 26,424 students who has non-English language background, and we have only 56 interpreters or translators to serve all these students and their families, as a ratio of one translator for every 400 and 70 students, and of course, with their families. So, we all here, as we notice, that we all strive to implement every student-known initiative signature, and to make this happen, I'm asking to hire more parent outreach translators in order for them to effectively serve all our students and their families with non-English language background. Thank you for taking out of your time, and I'm looking forward to achieve equity and success for all our students in our district. Thank you. Shukran.
Thank you. Rockstar teacher, Tamika Marshall.
I was promoted. Good evening, Chair, bugs, and members of the board. My name is Tamika Marshall, and I am now an instructional coach with the Office of English Learners. And I'm here today to talk about the work that our English learners have done with their annual language proficiency. Each year, students who receive direct English language support take an assessment called ACCESS, which is the standardized language proficiency test. Students engaged in a four-part assessment to include the language domains for listening, reading, speaking, and writing. So the ACCESS window, test window recently closed, but as schools prepare to open another testing window with T and Ready, it should never be lost on us, the importance of our multilingual students who are learning English, and their importance as a very movable subgroup with amazing potential. And lastly, what the assessment tells us. And I want to acknowledge all of our EL teachers, our test coordinators, my fellow EL coaches, and the Office of English Learners for working diligently on ACCESS testing, and of course, our students for engaging in that extra lift of language acquisition while they learn in their respective content areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Coordinator Marshall. Leslie Osborne.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is Leslie Osborne, and I'm an English language teacher at Charlotte Park Elementary School. When I started teaching in MNPS five years ago, I had no experience teaching English language learners. One of the first things I realized, however, was how much value our English learners bring to the classroom. This love of English learners made me realize my desire to work primarily with them, and this year I was able to move into an English language teaching position and applied for the EL Fellowship program. Part of this year-long program is developing a project to better support and advocate for our English learners in our school, the district, or the state. The idea for my project came last year during virtual learning. At the time, I was communicating more individually with each parent about their child's academic progress, but never giving them updates on their child's English acquisition. It made me realize that one way we can help our EL parents feel like their child is known is by giving them regular updates on their child's English progress. For my EL Fellowship project, instead of just fulfilling the state requirement of informing the parents of their child's individualized learning plan, or ILP, I invited parents of English learners to my school to learn about their child's ILP and ways to support their learner at home. I offered two sessions this year, and I'm looking forward to expanding into more sessions next year. I'm thankful to work for a district that values English learners and gives opportunities for teachers to build leadership skills. This fellowship has benefited me by helping me gain confidence in my advocacy. Before applying for the EL Fellowship, I thought of ways to better serve my English language families, but I had no ideas of how to implement them. Since going through this year-long program, I have learned how to find stakeholders needed to make a change for students, how to pitch ideas to these stakeholders, how to network with other allies, and how to receive and feedback to improve my practice. I hope the board continues to support this program because, along with making me a better advocate, it has made me a better educator. It has made me more aware of my English learning students and their continued bravery in showing up to class. It has made me more determined to better integrate them and their families into our community. I know that this program has made me a more thoughtful educator, and I wish opportunities like this could be given to more teachers. I hope the board continues to support the EL office and the EL Fellowship. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mercedes Gonzalez.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Mercedes Gonzalez, and I am an immigrant youth transition specialist in teen high schools. I am here to express my gratitude and respect to our drivers. The vast majority of them are more than drivers, they are friends to our students. We also know that most of our families continue to struggle and be affected by the shortage of drivers. This is why we must continue to advocate for a better pay for drivers and invest in applications that will help our students find the location of the bus for arrival times. We know that the transportation leaders are doing the best they can to recruit new drivers and are going above and beyond to make sure our students don't miss school content. However, there is always room for improvement. Doing some of the strategies that other districts are doing, I believe, will help us to become better, such as Perry Township Schools from Indiana that uses an application My Stop and that gives family exact information about the bus arrival. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just Gary Ferreira. Honey Harris.
I'm tired, y'all. First, thank you, my school board chair, my school board members, John Little, all right, see you. And everybody else here, parents, everybody. First, let me start off by saying thank you to Tulip Grove. I'm gonna tell you why. My son came here, I hate the mayor left. My son came in here and asked me for a dollar. I searched my purse, I didn't have one. But, this is where I say thank you to Tulip Grove, because he came through Tulip Grove with me, y'all, from preschool all the way to fourth grade. And the apple don't fall too far from the tree, he know his mama. He went right out to that car and hustled up him a dollar. But he couldn't, he could not count that dollar and that change to get those chips y'all see him eating on, unless those teachers at Tulip Grove didn't teach him how to count. Thank you to Tulip Grove, because y'all made sure that boy could eat some chips today. I just need the mayor to make sure that I have a dollar next time he wants some. Okay? And thank you to my principal, Allison Johnson, I have to say that, because y'all, her relationship and mine has grown since the day she walked into that building. Ms. Honey is not easily along with, because I have high expectations. I give you 110%, I expect 111%. From school board, from everybody surrounding me, teachers, everybody, they'll tell you, my son is number one to me. Therefore, Allison and I have grown, and let me tell you something, she is doing big things at Tulip Grove. Y'all need to come out there, I'm inviting everybody. Y'all, I want to tell this board, thank you for opening up slowly but surely, opening schools back up where parents can actually come into the buildings. So I want y'all to come out there. John Little will tell y'all, come on, we doing big things in his district. Tulip Grove is doing big things, I'm always gonna brag on my school. What we do matters. MNPS is one of the, close to being one of the number-one employers. What y'all do matters. Y'all know I'm a paraprofessional, I'm always coming down here asking for my coins. When y'all advocated to school- I want to take care of him. I have a daughter that graduated from McGavick, it's near and dear to my heart. She made it. She's down at Vanderbilt, I got her down at Vanderbilt before I left. I'm trying to get him, I want him to have one of the Belmont scholarships, whatever we got, because you know, I'm gonna be like this, looking, getting some dollars for my baby. Take care of me so I can take care of him. And those boys said it best, they gave y'all an admission statement, y'all wrote it. Some of us was here when it was wrote, live up to it. That's all I'm saying, live up to it. Do right by your employers, employees, you do right by MNPS students, because I can't afford to send him to private school, so he's here. So, make sure you do right. And his school is DuPont Tyler, and I gotta holler out to them too, because they know my expectation, they keeping him in line. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Elizabeth Hardy.
Good afternoon Chair and Board members and everyone. My name is Elizabeth Hardy and I, as of April the 20th, I mean April the 7th, I've been working for Metro Public Schools for 28 years. Thank you. So, everyone has read about inflation. And we have been hit among the hardest by inflation. We were excited about teacher getting their raises last year, and guess what, we didn't even gripe, not at all, about us waiting for our turn. But, we also didn't know how hard this year would be. We need to know that each and every one of you guys, ladies, gentlemen, will invest in us like you did to teachers. Because we know for a fact that the teachers cannot do anything without support. And those two gentlemen, again, they hit it. I am a EE, well Educational Assistant, I'm a paraprof, actually with one-on-one. I have two one-on-ones. So, guess what, while I'm working with one student, the other student is not getting the need, the attention they need, and plus they're non-verbal. So, there's two whammies. So, we just need you guys, if you don't understand, walk in our shoes, come to visit the schools. Some of you guys have never been a paraprof. I appreciate some of those that have been a paraprof. You know and understand how hard it is. You know, it's okay to teach, I mean, I give it up to the teachers. They do the IEPs, but guess what? We have to work with the IEPs when we with the students. They have the big old list, I have paperwork on both of my students. Yet, sometimes it's like, it's impossible to do it. So, I have to improvise, I have to like narrow it down to what I can do with the timeframe I have with these students. So, I just hope and pray that you just find it within your heart, just to look and understand what we're going through. We're not getting paid, and another point I want to make, I've been working on my job, my part-time job, five years, I'm making $4 a list in four and five years, then 28 years. So, tell me how much appreciation I get with that. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Elizabeth Hines. Bethany Riddle, Dr. Bethany Riddle Johnson.
Good evening Board members. My name is Bethany Riddle Johnson and I'm an MNPS parent. And I am here as a leader with NOAA. And one of our goals is to advance Black brilliance and build Black leaders, students like the two students who just spoke tonight. And first, this requires equity in advanced academics for our Black students. I applaud MNPS for their effort, excuse me, for their efforts to expand early post-secondary opportunities. We've spoken with the principal at White's Creek and heard firsthand about the preliminary successes with their dual enrollment course expansion and their early college model. But, we know that EPO opportunities are not equitable across our schools. Our high schools serving the most Black students also tend to have the fewest advanced academic opportunities. Progress is being made, but more opportunities are needed. Today, I heard from two Black high school students speak about the gap they see in AP course-taking between Black and white students and their racially diverse schools and the need, they feel to work twice as hard to prove themselves. This is why equity in advanced academics needs our continued attention and priority. Advancing Black brilliance and building Black learners also requires social emotional learning, advocacy centers, and restorative practices. MNPS's budget priority of advocacy centers in all middle and high schools is critical for meeting students' needs and promoting equity. Data from the fall, this past fall demonstrates the urgency of advocacy centers and restorative justice practices. Black students in MNPS were 3.6 more times likely than white students to be suspended in Fall 2022. We also know that in general, Black students are much more likely to be suspended for subjective infractions. Today, I heard from Justin Williams, an MNPS advocacy coach, lift up the importance of his role to help students deal with emotions and bridge gaps between home and school. More broadly, identifying measurable metrics to evaluate the success of the district's equity roadmap and adopting a board policy and equity in our schools are exciting and important efforts that I urge you to keep at the top of your priority list. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Raceon.
Good evening Members of the Board, Dr. Battle. My name is Brad Raceon, I'm with SEIU Local 205. We have members, a number of support employees are members of our union, including Kelly Lawrence, Honey Harris, and Michelle Hardy. You know, later this evening, you're gonna be adopting your aspirational budget, and I really like that word, aspiration. An aspiration is a strong desire to do something great. It's not the product of study or some calculations, it's something deeper. There's a pay study going on, and the two students up here earlier, Joseph Beckley and Jamarien Jackson, you know, made something perfectly clear. We don't need a study to know that essential workers who keep our schools running should earn enough to live where they work. When we talk about an aspirational budget, we're talking about what we as a community want our schools to be and what we as an employer want to be. And we should set an example, a positive example. And when we talk about aspirations, let's recognize that support employees have aspirations too, basic ones. They want to be able to support themselves on their MNPS salary, whether they're 12-month, 11-month, or 10-month employees. They want to be able to save a little for a rainy day. They want to be able to give their kids what they need. And they want to be able to go out and have a good time once in a while. That's not too much to ask, but for many support employees right now, that's out of reach. We heard earlier, Joseph and Jamarien must have read over my shoulder, they put it in, let's put it in perspective. Metro has a living wage policy and it's based on the MIT living wage, a calculation that's made every year for cities, including Nashville. Right now, MIT's current living wage for a full-time 40-hour job is $16.25, that's almost $34,000 a year. But, as we learned with the $15 minimum wage, 10- and 11-month employees don't work enough to earn that. Right now, more than 2,000 support employees don't earn enough to cover their own basic needs. This includes 852 paraprofessionals. Starting pay for parapros is almost $10,000 below the living wage. On top of that, as Michelle said, we're facing soaring inflation, skyrocketing housing costs, making it even harder for these low-wage workers. Last year, we were excited about the teachers' pay. Tonight, we need to know that you're going to invest in support staff like you did in teachers. It's time we don't just aspire to lift supporting pay, it's time we do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremiah Woden.
Good evening Board. It's interesting listening to some of these budget meetings and hearing Board members talk about the minimum amount of money we need to make our district function, because to be honest, right now, our district is not functioning. There's not been a single school day this whole year where every single one of my students arrived to school on time and the school year is almost over. Even this week, yesterday, we had one bus driver for all the routes at our middle school. So, we had students still arriving on the bus after 10:00 AM, over an hour after our school started. And that's not out of the normal. Today, we had the exact same issue, but with hail and lightning and rain and thunder thrown. I even got an email from one student who just said, "I don't know when or if my bus is gonna come, so I'm gonna go back home and try to do the work on school G, I hope I'll see you tomorrow." This is the status quo. That student was ready to come to school and learn and this Board, this administration has failed to provide that access to school. And they've done that all year long. It infuriates me that we have Board members sitting here preaching all night about equity, but not doing anything about the fact that we are depriving some of our most vulnerable students the access to their education every single day, 15, 30, 45 minutes at a time. So, as you deliberate over which items should be included on our baseline budget versus our aspirational budget, let's make sure our baseline budget ensures that our students will be provided transportation that gets them to and from school on time every day. I don't think that should be something that we have to aspire to. That should be our status quo. Our baseline budget should not be maintaining our current status quo where students miss instructional time every single day, because that to me is not, is not an acceptable status quo, and I hope you all agree with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Letitia Sadler Johnson. Patricia Sadler. Kelly Lawrence.
Hello Board, Council members. Hi Ms. Bug.
How are you doing?
I'm doing alright dear. My name is Kelly Lawrence, I am a cafeteria manager. I've been with Metro over 30-plus years. I've come to talk to you about, for many years, support staff in our schools have been among the lowest-paid employees. There are about 1,900 central workers at Metro National Public Schools making less than $30,000. That's about 65% of our support staff represented by SEIU. 80% of the people represented by Metro Public Schools make less than $40,000, and about 2,300 essential workers who make it possible for schools to open. Their positions are held by Black and Brown Tennesseans, 50% compared to only 43% of the population. Last year, you all know that the teachers got a nice amount of money, you know, so the support staff, we just asked them for a little portion of that to make it possible. So, when I first worked for Metro, I came in making $4.50 an hour. That'll tell you how long ago it was. Metro was the number one place to work, they had the best benefits, the best pay. As years went on, longevity left, cost of living left, and any other kind of portion that gave us a raise, where'd that go? Then, I started working for UPS, I do a security, and I was doing Metro and raised me three boys by myself as a single mom. I didn't ask for child support, because I felt like I needed to do what I needed to do for my children. Two got married, one just graduated from college. I worked hard. I love my children, my Metro schools. I've had them come back and thank me for being a mother to them, a grandmother to them, aunt to them. We are central workers, support staff. We do more than y'all think we do. Just because we're not teachers, just because we're in this building, don't mean we don't have that. Yes, I have a college education, yes, I can go out there and be a chef at any restaurant making that money. But, I love my children, because I know I make an impact in their life. One year, I had a child that went out and shot somebody and killed them. And all the thing he did was come to my back door every day, late school, two or three hours, and I was saving some food for him to eat every day. Because the teachers could not understand this child, he cared for me every day and didn't know why. So, I stayed after work and helped him learn to become the person he wanted to be, but then his mama was not doing what he normally do. So, he had to go do what he had to do, and now he's in jail. I've seen that a lot. So, we are the first person to see and last person to go. So, I think, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Paula Pendergrass. I'm sorry, Dr. Paula Pendergrass.
Good evening Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Battle. I am Dr. Paula Pendergrass, the current MEA Vice President and also an MNPS parent. I want to thank you for the work that you do and for what we have been able to accomplish together. The presented aspirational budget has many things that we should be proud of, such as paid family leave, increased SEL support, community achieves expansion, and no-cost meals for students, and the list goes on. There is no doubt that all of these things will make significant impact in the lives of our educators and of course, our students. Nevertheless, there are still some major pieces missing from this budget, as mentioned by the previous two students. We still have no indication of what kind of pay increase our support staff will receive. While we have stated that we are waiting for the results of the pay study, we need to recognize how long our support staff employees have been waiting in hopes for things to change. We need all of our employees to be making a living wage for Nashville, and we need that to happen now. We need to be the leaders we know we can be. We cannot validate our support staff by keeping them waiting. Another missing piece in this budget is a wage increase for our substitute teachers. Throughout this process, we have heard different strategies mentioned to attract more substitute educators, yet we still have schools that are extremely low job fill rates. Across the state, several districts have raised the daily pay of subs and have seen an increase in applicants. This is an example of effective problem solving. We understand that money cannot fix every problem. However, allocating money for our support staff, like Honey, and our substitute teachers, like Helen, will go a long way in making sure every student is known. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Pendergrass. Kat York.
Good evening. My name is Kat York, I'm a school psychologist, serving Paragon Mills, Elmanche School, and Cambridge High School. I'm using my time to address factors related to the recruitment and retention of support staff with specific attention to paraprofessionals for exceptional education. As a school psychologist, I work closely with special education teachers and paraprofessionals who carry out those services for individual educational plans for students with disabilities. Paraprofessionals and other support staff who work with these students provide indispensable infrastructure to daily routines. They greet students at the door, they provide assistance during push-in and pull-out classroom time, they help at lunch, they help at recess, they help during transitions and during breaks. Services may include toileting, feeding, communication devices, basic care, and safety. Paras double or even triple the tasks being accomplished in a classroom, as they are an extra set of eyes and hands for individuals with complex needs, so that teachers can focus on curriculum and classroom management. Support staff and paraprofessionals make differentiated learning a reality, and without them, services for most of our vulnerable students become promises we can't keep. It's my understanding that Metro Government and MNPS are conducting a pay study, but actually, I really only had to look as far as the internet and Honey Harris to come up with statistics. Yep, they're underpaid, they earn on less than 40K, more than 80% of support staff earn less than 40K, and 35% earn less than $30,000 a year. Those aren't sustainable wages, and again, with that step increase and the 1% COLA, it won't even close the gap or come close to what we're facing with inflation right now. I'm using my voice tonight to encourage the Board to both increase the number of paraprofessional positions. 40K. More than 80% of support staff earn less than 40K, and 35% earn less than $30,000 a year. Those aren't sustainable wages. And again, with that step increase and the 1% COLA, it won't even close the gap or come close to what we're facing with inflation right now. I'm using my voice tonight to encourage the Board to both increase the number of paraprofessional positions across the district and to push for an overall increase in pay for our support staff. Increasing support and keeping these employees will benefit not only our students, but our teachers, who need help carrying out those accommodations, the differentiated instruction, and safety plans for our classrooms. It will help our schools run better and make learning more accessible for every student. And I'll just say that a lot of times, we're using words like vulnerable and significant needs. The students we serve in EE, they're really strong, and they deserve to meet their goals and to make progress, and they deserve learning and to make those plans for after-school, just like the kids who are planning for college, just like the kids who are planning for careers. They need to make those, you know, they need to have those services as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nancy Holland.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Nancy Holland. I am a retired Metro teacher, and I'm also a substitute. I am a resident of Ms. Taylor's District 9. And I worked today and yesterday, and I worked last week. There still is a shortage of subs. And I appreciate everything that everybody previous to me has said tonight. Yes, salaries need to go up for everybody, but there's got to be more pay for subs. I mean, the $15.33 an hour, you know, the way I see it, the district is getting a whale of a bargain with me. I got four college degrees, and back when they did the highly qualified stuff, I had a whole, long list of that, too. But, you know, I sub because I want to, and I love it, and I will continue to do this as long as possible. But still, you know, there are the things that just kind of get under my skin. Like, when I kept getting phone calls on Friday night and Sunday afternoon from the Metro School substitute system, you know, for $15.33 an hour, and you want to take up my weekend? I don't think so. I did that when I was a teacher. I don't want to do it now for an hourly pay. In my, one of my jobs last week, there was not a sub to cover for a classroom, so all of the students were divided up, and I got extra students in addition to the teacher that I was subbing for. While I was in a school Monday, I had a colleague ask me about subbing for him. He'd had a death in the family. I got another phone call very early Monday morning from someone else I had subbed for, who also had a death in the family. And I felt badly being able to tell them that I could not sub for them. But, you know, I'm already booked, and that's just the way it is. I'm grateful for those jobs. I'm really glad the people I sub for want me to come back. That's a good feeling. But, you know, at the same time, this business of dividing up classes and then even a substitute has to take extra kids, because there's not enough subs available. When I heard about the raises, I looked for substitutes in the list, and I couldn't find it. And I thought, maybe it was overlooked. I mean, maybe it's buried under something else. You know, I know how this government paperwork stuff goes. And I still couldn't find it. And then I thought, maybe the Board is afraid that now that the state has passed this law, that retired subs can, I got to go. Anyway, they're afraid of too many people wanting to come back and sub.
Thank you.
I don't think you need to worry about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durham. Quanita Adams. Oh, my apologies. Sorry, Sarah Duran. And then, Quanita Adams.
I'm Sarah, and I'm actually going to read a letter that I received from one of our paraprofessionals over the weekend. She said, "Hi, Sarah. I wish I could attend a meeting on Tuesday, but I work a second job as a school paraprofessional job does not pay enough money to pay for a one-bedroom apartment for me and my son in the school zone I work in. If I could attend, I would say that to add to my load, the cost of living for me is rising with a $400 a month rent increase. My hopes for a two-bedroom for me and my elementary school-aged son this year is no longer a hope. I've called Section 8, and they don't accept new names for the waiting list until Fall 2022, and they refuse to specify which month and fall. The need for a substantial pay increase is absolutely necessary, and to not give a pay increase is simply inhumane when I can go work at Walmart for more money. But I stay in this line of work because of the real impact I make on the well-being of the children who need a trustworthy and dedicated guide and teacher one-on-one. MMPS has no idea how many single mothers are working as paraprofessionals and a second job to support their children, and it needs to be made clear that one cannot survive on our wage unless we have a second income, whether it be a job, by marriage, or by having a disabled dependent in the family one can get disability for. Please, please allow us to work our paraprofessional job with good compensation so that our children can live in decent housing. You are our only hope apart from moving out of the county. If that happens, who will do our jobs?" Thanks for letting me read that for y'all.
Thank you. Now, Quanita Adams.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Battle. I'm Quanita Adams, and I'm the only certified math teacher at Pearl Cone High School, serving a student, population of about 500 students. And I absolutely love my job. Love every single day of it. But I need a planning period, and so do my colleagues. According to the MOU, the district has agreed that teachers should receive at least 180 minutes of self-directed planning each week. And so, we have a couple of questions, because many of the teachers aren't getting that 180 minutes. If I'm the only certified math teacher, just imagine what's going on in the rest of the building. So, our question is just, what are the plans to make, in place to make sure that teachers are compensated for class coverage, especially when they cover classes during their already-scheduled class time? We understand there's an LOS form, but it's a concern that teachers are not being compensated adequately. What systems are in place to make sure that staff and administration and those that are in, that provide supporting services, educating our students, are under the same expectation to cover classes, not just teachers? What are the plans to make sure that teachers do not feel obligated or are forced to cover classes when they haven't been adequately allotted the negotiated planning time? And what are the expectations for student performance for classes that are not staffed? And so, we're at Pearl Cone High School, and our students are coming to us. They have a great need, and we still expect them to take T-CAP tests, T-N Ready, EOC. But on any given day, many of our students may see only one certified teacher, one teacher, at any given time. And so, there's a strain there, and we're tired. And teachers are walking down the hallway crying. Sometimes, I want to cry. I love my job. Sometimes, I want to cry, because it seems unfair. It seems inequitable. And also, teachers are concerned about professional evaluation. If you're not being given planning time, how can someone come in and evaluate you on a class that you may have the next period, when you didn't have the opportunity to go use the restroom, when you didn't have the opportunity to gather your thoughts, or replan a classroom? And finally, what are the accountability structures that will be in place to ensure that MEA negotiated terms are adhered to by school and district policy that will offer good faith that all parties are working for the good of the learning communities? I know this is a lot, and I know that we can't make people work for our district, but we can put things in place that keep our teachers there and show our teachers that we value them, and we value the time that they put in to our school system. Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to hearing your responses.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Looks like we have two repeats with Courtney Dial and Emily Benedict. Daniel Kim. Tanya Drossner.
Good evening, Dr. Battle, Chair Bugs, and members of the Board. My name is Dr. Tanya Drossner, and I am a third-grade teacher at Glenview Elementary. This is my 12th year as an educator and my fifth year with Metro Nashville Public Schools. I refuse to give up on public education and our schools. I'm here tonight to discuss our amazing support staff. I implore you to give our support staff a wage that proves their worth. All stakeholders, and most importantly, our students, benefit from our support staff. Instead of telling you things like "it takes a village," which I know everyone is familiar with, or unprecedented, right? I'm here to give you some examples of some of the greatness I have experienced here in MMPS with various support staff. I have seen support staff assist a tardy student to their class so they can feel more comfortable in transition. I've seen a cafeteria worker help talk and lend an ear to a student who came into the cafeteria in distress and was wanting to lash out at other students. I have also been able to have many hours with my family, and I've been able to spend more time creating engaging and effective lessons for my students due to support staff copying and laminating the things that I need to do my job. Advocacy center coaches have a difficult and very important job. They allow instruction to continue and help to minimize disruptions, but more importantly, this is where relationships are being made. Support staff and paraprofessionals learn the names of the students. They are daymakers. Relationships matter. In MMPS, we understand that this is part of the MMPS SEL mission statement. That says, quote, "Within MMPS, we focus on building relationships and the capacity for adults to create a positive, welcoming, and healthy environment where students feel known and valued," end quote. This is what our support staff helps with each day. The last time I was here, I quoted Maya Angelou, and I'm going to do it again regarding our support staff. She was a woman of many great words. She said, "People will forget what you said. They will forget what you did, but they will never forget how you made them feel. Let's show our MMPS support staff some love and help them feel valued by paying them a living wage. I appreciate them so much. Thank you for your time, leadership, and service."
Thank you. And that will conclude our public participation. We will now move on to an amended consent agenda. We had Items 1, D-13, E, and F that were removed. Can I get a motion on the amended, oh, can I just get a motion on the amended consent agenda for fidelity's sake? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? All abstaining? All right. We'll move on to 1D-13, Panorama Education, Inc. Mrs. Tyler.
So, for the Panorama contract, I noticed that the evaluation of the contract is based on the quality of the services provided and the successful administration of stakeholder surveys. I really like the Panorama survey, and I think it gives an important voice to our students and our teachers. But I'd really like to hear more about how are we using the data that those surveys generate? So, for example, I know that with POSUP, the principals get direct response from the families and/or the students themselves and are making direct changes immediately from that information. And, but when it's the teachers that are having their voices heard, what is Central Office doing to make sure that their needs are being met? And do the teachers know that you guys are doing that? Do they understand that you're working for them because you actually understood the results from the surveys? So, I guess I just need to know, you know, data's as good as its application. So, if the service from Panorama is stellar and the administration of the surveys is successful, then that's great. But if we don't actually ever use the data from the survey, then it's not worth the money we'll spend on it. So, I just want to make sure that the surveys are being used appropriately.
Any other questions?
No, before I have a similar response, is the question how we're using Panorama surveys?
Yeah, so the question is, how are we addressing the responses from the surveys? And do the teachers know what's being done to address their concerns?
Paul Mason, one of you want to? And I'm happy to chime in.
I'm always happy to have Dr. Changis standing behind me at the ready. So, Paul, jump in whenever you need to. First, I'll say, I'll focus on kind of a school-level response, and then I'll get into a little bit of the district level and what my team does. So, the first thing, Dr. Changis' wonderful department, Tina Stinson creates an Excel spreadsheet for me and for my executive directors, and they flag if they see trends somewhere from a pure numbers standpoint, that this number is lower here than in other places. And so, that's a first line of someone looking at it through that lens and flagging some things for my level in particular. Beyond that, we expect principals to take some school-level actions based on what they're seeing. And it's, kind of think of it in a tiered process, almost like we treat MTSS. The majority of our schools' principals get great feedback, make little tweaks here and there, and we would hope that teachers mainly see the actions happening at the school level and that clearly something was read and heard and saw, because it is an anonymous survey for the most part, right? And we want to protect that anonymity so that people can feel the need to say what they need to say. And so, we work on having our, helping our principals address things at that level. Executive directors, then, in their school visits, so that's usually deployed in October, November timeframe. Mid-year evaluations happen in December, and there's a big process of data collection that goes in that. So, my executive directors use those surveys in their weekly, monthly visits to schools. And they have discussions on an individual level with each principal to, "Tell me what you're doing. This is what I saw. Here's some feedback." Just a thought partnership that way, right? And we often would encourage our principals to use their MTSS team or their instructional leadership team, or their leadership team, depending on how they've branded it at their school, to bring them in and get some feedback as well. "This is what I saw. This is what I'm thinking. This is what I'd like to do next." And then, of course, if we have some that requires a little bit more strict intervention, a plan of support, those things are detailed that way. In my work with my executive directors, in my one-to-one meetings with them, I'll go over their network as a whole. We'll look at trends I saw from the spreadsheet I mentioned earlier. We'll talk about the things they've been doing in their meetings and what their next steps are and what they hope to see. And all of that, of course, we try to build time into our monthly PLN meeting, because our principals are trying to respect how busy they are and what they're doing. We try to build that time. If we feel it's valuable, we try to reflect that in how we use their time at principal meeting. So, we try to build in time at the November or December PLNs, which admittedly is a busy time of year, so it can be difficult to fit in. But give them time to hear from their colleagues and share with one another in a vulnerable moment with people who are dealing with a similar thing, to share what they've done, ideas they've had, successes they've had in the past, or ideas they're thinking about floating in the future. Sorry, I made some notes. I want to make sure I'm hitting that. And then, we align that with our leadership framework, honestly. So, we look at the core actions in our leadership framework and then the team evaluation report for administrators. And we look at the plans of what they're doing, much of which talks about shared leadership and talks about teacher voice and feedback in that realm. And so, this is a great, it's an invaluable tool that the principals use when used appropriately to drive school improvement. One question you ask is, do our teachers know? And that's one I've given a lot of reflection to over my two years here. I mean, the first year I was here when we gave Panorama, we were, a lot of our schools didn't have students in them just yet. So, the data was admittedly difficult to do a lot with in Fall of 2020. In this past Fall, we've really focused on reducing variability at my executive director level, make sure we're all using the same practices across all of our networks to then affect all of our schools. And next steps, as we refine our operating principles and our work at our PLN, will be to continue to reduce variability and share best practices throughout launch and landing this summer, going into next year. A lot of what we've done with POSUP has actually led to a lot of, we've been able to embed POSUP faculty surveys in our spring PLNs. And so, that has been something that we've been well-received by our principals, the ability to share with our colleagues, and we look forward to doing more so with Panorama. So, I hope I've answered that in detail, but if there's something else.
Yes, Paul, want to add anything?
Dr. Bellamy's hit the high points. I'll just add that our team reads every, they're open-ended responses. Our team reads every response. We do share the data with the executive directors, with Dr. Bellamy, but we also highlight, flag things that we have concerns about. We've had a lot of opportunities to work with the SEL department. They use the data along with their walkthroughs to look at the climate in schools. I have members of my team that are also involved in those walkthroughs, but we looked at the combined, we look at the combined data to look at the climate within the school and the district as a whole. I also know that we've conducted a number of trainings over the last couple of years with schools, also provided protocols in terms of how to work with your faculty, with your, you know, with your leadership teams to go through the data and have the conversations that are important, to make sure that teachers feel that they're heard. It's, I think we all value teacher voice and student voice. Also know that Dr. Battle and I have had conversations. We, she's been looking, she, we've got a data-driven director who looks at these results. But one nice thing about the platform is it allows you to not only look in detail at a particular school, a particular school, but to see schools side by side and to look at how things compare from building to building. But as far as the platform itself, we had an RFP process, we went through that, but we've been evaluating it. The company itself has been very responsive to the district's needs and to adjustments that have been asked of them. And so we do hope to go forward again and to continue to use that data, and we think it's a valuable piece of information.
I'll also add that this specific data is used, discussed, and planned around with our cabinets, particularly our teacher cabinet. And so we've done some focused sessions with our teachers, we've done the same thing with our support staff, we did the same thing with our student board members and other student groups to dig into the Panorama data to understand it and to determine next steps. So it is used at just about every level, principal, executive director, support hub, cabinets, in many ways.
Well, I have no desire to get rid of the survey. I just wanted to make sure that we're using it appropriately, and it sounds like you guys have really covered the bases there. Sometimes you just need to hear what is the plan so that you know, because not every teacher in every building knows that you're doing all these things behind the scenes. And it's really helpful to make sure that that information is out there so that they can address it if they want to be part of that, if they want to be part of that teacher cabinet, and maybe they want something with that. I don't know. But I, so I'm not looking to get rid of this, I'm not looking to deny the survey. I think it's really helpful. I think our teachers need an anonymous voice, our students need to have their voice too. So I guess if nobody has anything else to add, I'd like to move to accept the.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that Dr. Bellamy was speaking my language when he talked about using the data to reduce the variability at the ED level and sharing best practices. And I think that's the best-case scenario, is, you know, you're looking for trends where support is needed and trends where something clearly is going really right. And so I think, in my mind, that's the best thing that could happen, is where there's opportunities for collaboration coming out of that. So I just want to sort of just help to buoy up those efforts in any way that I can. So I'm appreciative of that.
Thank you, Mrs. Masters. All right, all in favor of Mrs. Tyler's motion, please raise your hand. Panorama passes unanimously, thank you. We will now move on to 1E, Board Policies. All right, 1E, then you had a question, Mr. Little?
We can move up to 1F to just discuss the budget, have a community event I need to go speak to. So I want to discuss the budget if possible.
All right, Mrs. Poo Po Walker, do you mind if we move? Okay, we'll go ahead. Approval of the fiscal year 2022-23 budget? Who pulled that off? Mrs. Tyler?
Yeah, I just want to, we had a very robust conversation about it in our committee meeting earlier, but sometimes people don't watch all of those, I don't know why. But in case they don't, I want to make sure that it's out here during our board meeting, some of the information, and to really make it clear what our priorities were. And I know those of you who've been watching have been hearing about, our SEIU has come to speak, our paraprofessionals have come to speak, our teachers have spoken in support of our support staff, we've heard from cafeteria managers and nutrition services. And I just wanted to make it absolutely clear that increasing their compensation is literally our number-one goal in our budget structure, is to increase employee compensation, and specifically, we're looking at support staff. So that needs to be made clear, and we will, you can continue to hold us to that, and we welcome you coming to talk to us about it. But it is definitely up there. And then I was going to let Frida, who is also the chair of the Budget Committee, go over the other things.
Well, we can, we have committee reports at the end.
All right.
So you pulled it off, do you have a recommend, or have a motion?
Yeah, I moved to accept the budget.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, then, Mrs. Masters?
I just want to remind everyone that it's our budget. Yes, the mayor and council fund it, and that may come with recommendations from their side. Hopefully, because of our great relationships with them that are based on our aspirational budget, but that it comes back to us then, as a board, to make those final decisions about where that funding goes. And we are going to remain true to our top priority.
Thank you, Mrs. Masters. Go ahead, Mr. Little.
Yeah, thank you guys for moving it up. I mean, listening to teacher, students, and paraprofessionals, it tells us, living in Nashville, how much inflation has just drove rent, mortgage, and food and everything else up. I think this is an opportunity for us to do right by who I call our frontline employees and look forward to this journey.
All right, Ms. Delroy?
I'm sorry, I was just rubbing my head.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, or to, yes, the motion to pass the approval of the budget, please raise your hand. All right, passes unanimously. Now we will move on to 1E, Board Policies, Mrs. Poo Po Walker.
I just wanted to note that we deferred Policy 5.1.17 to second meeting in May for further discussion. So right now, we just need to approve Policy 1.900, no, 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 take it back, 6.3041. What's the deal on the church level?
And 1, that's the one that we talked about, the last governance, but then we put it on this agenda because we hadn't given enough notice. So it's already passed through Governance Committee.
So we just need to pass those two, 1.900?
Approval of 1.900 and 6.3041.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? All abstaining? All right, we will now move on to announcement, I'm sorry, to committee reports. We'll begin with Mrs. Player Peters, Miss Player, around the budget, and then I will recap our recent work session. Oh, and then, of course, Mrs. Poo Po Walker with Governance, my apologies. Go right ahead.
We had our Budget and Finance Committee today, and we covered that, you know, this is, we are setting a culture of passing aspirational budget. And like Ms. Tyler said, that this employee compensation is our number-one priority, and we will plan to communicate and advocate this to the mayor's office and to city council, what our priorities are, continuing also along with continuity of federal-funded initiatives, academic and SCL integration and operation and improvements in school support. We had a discussion on how we continue to make employee compensation a number-one goal as it was for last year and the past couple of years, that as we go forward and looking at to make sure, as many people said, that our employees are able to work and live in the communities that they teach, and how we understand that and make sure our compensation is thoughtful and complete. And so we definitely understand this economy, the economic environment of inflation, of making sure that our employees have a livable wage, and also make sure we do it with data and information to support that, those increases. And so as we plan to advocate, along with the mayor and with the city council, we plan to advocate that this is a multi-year process, and the first part was making sure teachers are the best-paid teachers in the state this year, putting emphasis on the continued effort for support staff and understanding their needs and understanding, as the information has been brought out regarding what it takes to really live and thrive in this current economic environment, and how we can work together to make sure we do that in a way that it's, that it's moral and that's right and is done with dignity and respect. And so at this part, you know, we have changed how we look at our budget, how we approach our budget, what it takes for the whole educational environment, when our employees contribute to the educational environment, how it's a multi-pronged approach, and it takes multiple levels of staff to do that. And also the importance of what it takes to truly educate the child and the environment with it. And so we talked about that, we talked about the nutrition services budget, and how we need to also talk about, when we talk about employees, talk about nutrition employees, that they're also included in the conversation, and that there's also a specific online item, but is that to make sure they are kept up with a living wage and make sure as a separate fund from the operating budget, that there's a way to make that allocation connected to that, in addition with the support staff, that all support staff are considered at the same time with the different funds. And then we also talked about the federal employee, you know, the federal grants fund, and how we use ESSER funds and how they've been approved and then used as a reimbursement and a pass-through. So as we move on, we hope that the community, the support staff, will come and help us advocate, as we do here, together as one voice, as the importance, to make sure that we have the compensation that we need and that we can continue with the commitment of making sure we have the best employees, and not just the best teacher, but the best employees of the district, and how that is going to take a concerted effort to advocate together with that. So as we continue that conversation, as we continue the works, the budget process is a tedious and continuous process, and it's ever-evolving, and we continue to work together with our community, with our employees, with our elected officials, to make sure we have a comprehensive budget for everyone, and that's continued the maintenance of effort, but also continued with the commitment of elected officials with new revenues coming to education, so we can do what we need to have a full, thoughtful part. And we've had three stakeholder meetings, so we thank the community for participating in that, thank you for Dr. Battle and her team to making that accessible, and we'll continue that. But as we do this aspirational budget, the focus of saying, this is our intent, this is our moral values, and these are our priorities, and understanding that it takes a community to fund our priorities.
Thank you, Mrs. Player. Mrs. Poo Po Walker?
We had a lengthy discussion on teacher tenure policy to be revisited, and a brief presentation on some changes to Title IX policy, and that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you. All right, we'll begin announcements on that end with Abeniz.
Do you want me to do student member of the board as a committee?
Sure, you can recap for us, student board member. Next steps.
So, student member of the board, it is now open to find Angelie's replacement as she, oh, sorry, to find Abeniz's, no, Abeniz's.
You were right. She's graduating.
Your replacement, but Abeniz's new colleague.
Her successor.
Yes. Your successor, not replacement. Sorry. You can never be replaced. You can never be replaced. Never. So, okay, it's open on the MNPS website, applications are due by 5:00 PM, April 29. See, this is why I whispered in your ear that you're going to be the one that's going to talk about it. And we have a great committee in place to review the applications, and then we, everyone goes through an interview process, and then the new member will join us on the board along with Abeniz, starting in September. And so for anyone who is curious, I am now going to ask Angelie to give a little overview of what's involved with being in the position.
Yeah, so obviously, this is a responsibility, and it's not a title or a position to be taken lightly. With that being said, I do really appreciate my time on the board, as I've learned and grown as a student and a person, more than any opportunity has really presented for me. The seat, again, as Ms. Poo Po Walker mentioned a few weeks ago, is pretty hot. But with that, you're really exposed to these real-life experiences that you don't really get in a normal classroom setting. And with that, you also represent all of your peers in the MNPS district. And though that could be really overwhelming sometimes, it's also empowering knowing that this board and this district cares and considers what the students care about. And putting students first is always a priority, especially for this governing body, and to be a student board member that represents the people that should be put first in a school district is really significant. And so I encourage anyone who is a rising junior, who is willing and able to fulfill this role, I know that you can fulfill it and serve your community well. Thank you.
Thank you. April 29, 5:00 PM, deadline.
Thank you, Mrs. Masters and Ms. Quimbo. All right, Abeniz, let's begin with announcements.
Thank you. I'm really excited to go first because I want to beat all of you and congratulate Angelie.
Oh. Congratulations. Valedictorian.
And I think it just speaks to how lucky we are to have her here and how privileged I am to have her as a partner. And we're really sad to see her go, but it also shows how bright, you know, our MNPS students are. And then next, I want to speak about NOAA. They had a press conference earlier today at 4:00 outside of the offices on the other side, and basically they just talked about the importance of voting for the upcoming elections for the board seat. And, you know, just like that was said earlier, it's very important for people that are able to vote to vote, because it's the best way to express their will and to express their opinions in their board of election, board seat elections. And then at last, I want to also thank Ifa Wilson, who was a speaker earlier, and she talked about how she was an interpreter for the district and how the ratio for interpreters to students is only 1 to 400. And I just felt like what she did was very important because it gave voice to students that don't have that ability to speak for themselves, because they're new to the country, they don't speak the language. And it just shows how, you know, we still have a long way to go and try to make sure that the voices of all students are heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Abeniz. Dr. Gentry?
Thank you. So just want to first, just again, thank Belmont University for its partnership and all the partners that were mentioned in Dr. Battle's director's report. I do have to say, I feel some kind of way, in a good way, about the change in the name of the program from Bridges to Belmont to the Bell Tower Scholars. To me, it just gives the students more of a connection and not a handout, more of being a part of that campus, a part of what's, you know, a part of the infrastructure of that institution. And so I do appreciate that change in label. And we all know, dealing with priority schools and other, you know, branding we've put on students and on buildings, that labels do matter. But I also want to add that the number of partnerships and valuable partnerships that we have are definitely a reflection of the leadership, Dr. Battle. You have gone out and you have created relationships. These are not just people that come to us. You actually extend a hand and continue to highlight, and I guess you got accused of patting ourselves on the back earlier today, well, heck, yes, we did, with all of the great things that our students are doing. And so if we don't tout that greatness, but it is, let me start that sentence over. It's in touting our greatness that we get the extension of opportunities for people to partner with us. So I want you to continue to beat that drum, continue to pat yourself, and there's our students and our teachers and all of our staff and members who help to serve our students, continue to elevate them, continue to highlight their greatness, and we will continue to create the kinds of partnerships that make a real difference for our students. So I thank you for that. I also want to make a point of clarification. Earlier, it was stated that Milton Johnson, who did indeed give $10 million of his personal money to fund the Belmont Scholarship Program, is a graduate of MNPS, but he did not graduate from Glencliff, he graduated from Stratford. Sorry, just wanted to clear that up.
Overdetermined.
He graduated from Stratford, and again, as an immediate-pass CE, no, not immediate-pass, yeah, immediate-pass CEO of HCA, he was always a supporter of MNPS. Being a graduate, he also attended Nashville State Community College, in case you did not know that, before getting a scholarship to attend Belmont. And so his belief in what we were doing, his belief in even our partnership with what we used to call middle college, with Nashville State Community College, was the right thing to do. And there was not a day that we passed one another, that he did not thank me for being on the board and acknowledge the work that we did as a collective on behalf of MNPS students. So just wanted to make sure that that got read correctly into the record.
Thank you for that, Dr. Gentry. Mrs. Poo Po Walker?
I want to just personally congratulate Angelie. So proud of you and all your leadership. I want to congratulate the Teachers of the Year, it was fun to celebrate them last night, especially Kristen Butler, the theater teacher from Hillsborough, who got the High School Teacher of the Year. Hillsborough's production of Wizard of Oz is happening this weekend, everybody should check it out. I want to give a personal thank you to Paul Changus, who are here is retiring. I want to give Paul Changus a round of applause. He makes us all smarter and better, and we're going to miss you. I know you'll be sticking around, but... I know you'll be sticking around, but still, thank you for your service.
And he's hilarious, y'all just don't know. He is so funny to me.
I also want to thank, personally thank Representative Bob Freeman. So, Bob Freeman, who serves in the State House and in his district overlaps with mine, sponsored HB 2309, which passed in the House yesterday and will be heard in the Senate, SB 2464 on Thursday, passed the full House, moving to the full Senate. This bill, which was also facilitated by Turk, allows students who are DACA recipients deferred action for childhood arrivals to receive state licensure. So, currently, under state statute, DACA recipients don't qualify for teacher license, nursing license, any license, because of language, the way it was written, which was written before DACA existed. And so, that passed 55 to 35 in the House, which is remarkable in the climate we have around immigrants. And so, that means that our graduates, who go on to whatever, explore talents, can get licenses in Tennessee to practice, to do good work, come work in our schools, and so, I want to thank Bob personally. Want to congratulate the E.L. Fellows, for those of you who don't know, the E.L. Fellows who spoke tonight, I think this is the third cohort, the E.L. Office encourages E.L. Teachers and people who work with E.L. Students to apply every year, and they learn about advocacy and policy and funding and all kinds of good things, and then they each have a project. And so, you heard some of them tonight, their advocacy project, very proud of them, and great ideas, they had great ideas. And lastly, early voting begins tomorrow. Everybody should be voting ASAP. Thank you.
I just want to add to Ms. Poopa Walker's announcement about Hillsborough's play, The Wizard of Oz, the Support Hub's own Harold Finch, just daughter, is playing the lead, she's going to be Dorothy, in The Wizard of Oz at Hillsborough, and her mother is Darcy Finch. I just know where she gets the talent from, but throw that out there, too. So, it starts on Friday. Her name is Daralyn Finch. Thank you for that.
Vice Chair, Rod.
Thank you. So, I guess I'll start, I was going to go in a different order, but I will start with Overton, just had their present, their play of Some Things Rotten this past weekend. I went on Saturday, which was understudy night, and it was so impressive, y'all, it was very funny, if you don't know what Some Things Rotten is, but it was very good, so impressive, an incredible amount of work, just by everybody, the parents that were there, it was really great, and it was so wonderful to see them. Part of the reason I went on Saturday, I had planned on going on Sunday, was because I had met several of those understudy students at the ISR Conference. So, I want to thank Dr. Smith at Overton, and of course, Dr. Eads, which some of y'all probably know as Angela, at Vanderbilt School for Science and Math, for doing the symposium that was this past week at the Martin Center, really impressive. Our children are so smart, y'all. They were giving me words that I had to look up a little bit sometimes, they were so brilliant, so informed, so excited. It was really impressive, and I was so, so happy to see them. It was Overton, Hillsborough, and Stratford, so on the Stratford note. I also went to the Sports Hall of Fame this week, MMPS Sports Hall of Fame luncheon, and it was very exciting to go, and I enjoyed celebrating specifically the new inductee, Sherry Wright Dickens, who is from the Overton class of 1990. And also, on the play note, Shane Elementary is doing Willy Wonka, May 13th, 14th, and 15th. I will be there with one of my sons, who is seemingly convincing himself that he's in it, which we got to have a whole nother conversation about, and that's a whole nother thing. I have already informed Mr. Benjamin Slinkard, who is running that, he is Shane's gifted and talented teacher, and he was also celebrated last night at the Teacher of the Year. Tuscaloosa and Haywood both just had community support meetings, they both have different needs that I would like to just make sure that we're all aware of. Tuscaloosa is doing a student ticket reward program, and so, they're collecting new and gently-used items that students might want to turn their tickets into, to earn, and Haywood is doing, this will be their upcoming, this upcoming holiday season will be their second year, of doing their Holiday Shop-A-Thon, where students can come in and purchase items through their ticket process as well, for their parents and family members, and so, they take new and gently-used home items. The biggest need they have are for items for the males in their lives, or people that would typically like sports, or tools, or those kinds of things. Of course, obviously, we need to keep in mind the size of the item. So, if you have things that you might typically take to Goodwill as a home decor item or something else, please let me know, and I will get them over there to them. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Player?
Dr. Changus, you broke my heart. Like, your own mother can break down data in layman's terms, anyway, but bittersweet, but congratulations, so you will be missed. Also, to what Dr. Gentry said about promoting what we do, colleges do it all the time, higher ed does all the time, promote what they're doing well, and so, we should be proud, with Dr. Battle is doing that, we promote our own. When you go to college, I know I went to Fisk, they taught a sense of pride of all of our accomplishments, historical accomplishments, and so, for us to say that we're patting ourselves on the back, you know, if you don't do it, no one else will, but also show the community of the great work and improvement that we are doing, so we take pride in promoting, and also, it's in our policy to actively promote our, and it's one of our duties as a board, or our district, in a positive way. One announcement that I have, I forgot to mention, my committee report, the state of Metro has been set, it's on April 27th at 10:00 a.m., April 27th at 10:00 a.m. I'll let you know the location, hopefully by the next meeting, oh, no, do you have a location for that, by chance? It's like the next meeting.
Southeast Community Center.
Southeast Community Center. Thank you, Southeast Community Center. So, hopefully, you can attend. If not, it will be streaming live on Metro Nashville Network, you can follow that there. Also, I'd like to give a shout-out to our finalists from the Teacher of the Year Award. We have the wrong people circle.
I got my people circle.
Ashley Segal from Croft Middle is a district finalist, and then for Principal of the Year, Justin Uppinghaus of Woods Elementary, both in my district, so congratulations to Justin Woods, Principal Uppinghaus, and Ashley Segal. So, I just want to congratulate them on that. And then, also, I would like to say Ramadan Kareem, it is Ramadan, so please give some grace to our Muslim students who are fasting, and whoever has fasted before to do it for over 12 hours, God bless them, literally, because it's not an easy thing, so please offer a little grace if they're a little hangry, it's for a good reason, and it's for a reason, so I just want to say, have a blessed Ramadan, and that I hope it's a wonderful spiritual enlightening experience for all of our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Player. Mrs. Masters?
Thank you. I just want to echo what Dr. Battle began with, that we've had some really exciting experiences in Goodlettsville this week. Yesterday morning, we got to tour the Advocacy Center at Goodlettsville Elementary, in their temporary location at Graymar, a really shining example of the work. I think one of the most exciting takeaways for me was that the teachers feel supported by this work, and they feel like it's really, it's coming into the classrooms in very meaningful ways, and they're able to focus even more on the work that they're there to do, so I just, I'm very appreciative of that, and of the opportunity to see that in action. Then, we broke ground on the new Goodlettsville Elementary School, broke ground, we shoveled some dirt in the Goodlettsville Middle School, Tim, but that was, I mean, Goodlettsville Middle is another amazing example of a beautiful, shining, happy school in Goodlettsville. We've got it going on in Goodlettsville, y'all, just so you know. So, a couple of really exciting opportunities for us to get in schools, see what's going on. And then, of course, the Teacher of the Year awards. I had a fantastic time sitting with Latoya Cobb and Kim Davidson of Amqui Elementary. We maybe, we were whispering a little and carrying on, but it was fantastic, so excited for Kim for being one of the finalists for Elementary School Teacher of the Year. Speaking of labels, when we talk about a priority status school, Amqui is a wonderful example of a school that is striving to serve all students in very meaningful ways. So, I think the fact that one of our teachers was honored as an Elementary School Teacher of the Year finalist, it just, you know, recognizes that work. Char Rand from Litten Middle, also in my district, was the Middle School Principal of the Year, she also was my daughter's principal. And then, I really also want to talk about Kaitlin Egan, who is the Support Staff of the Year, one of the three, who's at Dan Mills Elementary, and she is one of these parapros that we've been hearing about all night. I've seen firsthand what she does, it's spectacular and meaningful and important, and I would, I would definitely recommend that you board members go into one of your schools, ask to see the work being done by these paraprofessionals, because it's so integral to everything. I also wanted to mention, thank you, Jeanne, for mentioning elections, and we're so grateful that school boards is still going to be an elected position here in Nashville, for now. And as advocacy chair, I just want to talk about the advocacy that we've been doing on the state level. The funding formula has not yet been passed, they will not end their session by Easter as they had hoped, so it looks like it'll probably be going into mid-May, so the advocacy continues for Nashville's education to be fully funded. On the flip side of that, we have great relationships with our Metro Council members and with the mayor. Mayor Cooper was with us this morning, Jim Schulman, Vice Mayor Schulman, was at both events, Zach Young, Russ Bradford, Dave Rosenberg, Emily Benedict, Nancy Van Reese, Tanya Hancock, that's just a few, there are more, of the council members who are just expressing really deep, meaningful support for what we're doing, because, of course, we need them to approve that budget, so they can then send it back to us, and we can say what we're going to do with the money. I think that's it. I wanted to share that I had like a lot of things I wanted to say. I know, you want me to say something else? Okay, like, I could keep going? No. Student member of the board, we already covered that. Yeah, that's it. I will stop now.
Thank you. Mrs. Tyler?
I also want to take a moment to personally congratulate Anjali on her co-valedictorian status for Hillwood High School, and I want to thank and recognize all of our valedictorians and salutatorians this year. The list was just recently announced, and I'm just so proud of all of those students, that hard work, you know it was hard work, and you know that they put in the time and the effort and the hours, and to be recognized for that is meaningful. So, congratulations to all of our valedictorians and salutatorians, and I'm looking forward to attending some of your graduations, and I guess, go vote. That's the only other thing I can think of at the moment.
While you still can.
Thank you. Mrs. Player, did you have another follow-up?
I just forgot to announce Glencliff, talking about plays, Glencliff had their special play, Our Greatest Need, which was tonight at 6:00, so I couldn't make it, and which is unique about this, is where our general-edged students work with the students with special needs, and they actually play the play together, and it's their 10th anniversary doing this, and so, I've heard great things about it, but I can't be there because of these duties, but I just want to recognize that.
Thank you. And to our valedictorian, Anjali.
So, I wanted to start off by saying congratulations to all the students who were recognized tonight, we had a lot tonight. So, to the boys of East High, Brandon Miller, as well as the wrestlers and Bell Tower Scholars from across the district, congratulations on all of your hard work. Next, congratulations to all the MMPS students who competed in TN HOSA two weeks ago. Also, huge shout-out to Ms. Hickman from my school, who was named HOSA Advisor of the Year for the entire state of Tennessee. Next, if you're interested in joining Nashville's Mayor's Youth Council, the application for the 2022-2023 school year is now open. Additionally, again, the initial application process for the junior student board member is open until 5:00 p.m. on Friday, April 29th. Cool. For my fellow seniors, congratulations on all of your achievements throughout high school. It's hard to believe we only have around a month left until graduation, and with the drastically low college acceptance rates for our class, as well as not really having a conventional high school experience, I wanted to say and remind you all that you are more than just a number and statistic. Do not take rejection as a way to invalidate all of your accomplishments and hard work. I know each of your futures are bright, and I look forward to seeing where your plans, whether it be college, a gap year, and straight onto a career, will take you after high school. And I wanted to end off by saying thank you for your support throughout the time, my time on the board, and there being named valedictorian for Hillwood's Class of 22 is one of my biggest accomplishments, I must say, being named co-valedictorian makes this achievement all the more important to me. I get to share this title with my best friend, Rudra Patel. I don't know where I would be without his support, and he's never one to really like being on the spotlight, which, if you know him, he's so humble, despite towering over everyone at 6'5", but he deserves as much of this recognition as well. And to all of our valedictorians and salutatorians, congratulations for all of your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Anjali. I want to remind everyone that school is out for students Thursday and Friday. Don't be like me and show up with your baby in tow at 8:00 a.m. as I did one day in the fall. Again, school is out Thursday, I was so excited for pre-K to start, y'all remember that. Anyway, school is out Thursday and Friday, but when students come back to school next week, I'm sure teachers will be preparing or reminding, recapping with students, as high school students prepare for EOC tests, but as our elementary and middle school students prepare for TCAP, the testing window opens. They start taking TN ready, so make sure your babies are sleeping, make sure they are resting, make sure that they are spending some time reviewing, and then just let those babies flourish, they will be great. Just remind them to take deep breaths, you know all the testing strategies, and if you don't know, please reach out to your teacher or principal. I know, for lack of a better phrase, we seem to be just kind of white-knuckling it to the end of the year, it's been an intense year, but we will get there, it's just around the corner, graduations, promotions, excitement for all. There's so much more I want to say, just thanking all of our staff for everything that you all continue to do every single day, to all of our winners from last night, and then those who we may not see, who haven't elevated you quite yet, we appreciate the work that you do. And with that, yes, and thank you to Ms. Robirsh, Ms. Robirsh and team for putting together last night's event, it was beautiful and special. But with that, pretty boss out, you will never live that down, that is the cutest thing. Be there now for the business. This meeting is adjourned.
You knew.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.